Meeting of New Hanover County Schools, I would like to call this meeting to order. Ms. Bowie, would you please call the roll?
Good morning, Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Bullier.
Here.
Ms. Justice.
Here.
Ms. Craybill.
Here.
Mr. McManus.
Here.
Ms. Walker.
Here.
And Mr. Wildebohr.
President.
All right, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion, Mr. Wildebohr?
I'd like to move that we add, in addition to our agenda this morning.
All right, what is that, sir?
I would like to have a moment of silence, especially we have a very important and big meeting ahead of us, and I think a moment of silence or a moment of prayer would be very appropriate.
All right, the motion is to add a moment of silence after the approval of the agenda before information. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, and that was...
Give it.
Give it to Mr. Bullier, okay. Motion is approved, Ms. Bowie, if you could please add a moment of silence. And, so is there a motion to approve the agenda with the addition?
The move.
Thank you, Mr. Wildebohr, is there a second?
Second.
All right, and, do we need to vote on that? Sorry, we didn't vote on the addition, I'm sorry. Let me go back. What was the vote for the addition of the moment of silence? Ms. Bowie, roll call.
Ms. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Bullier.
Aye.
Ms. Justice.
Aye.
Ms. Craybill.
Aye.
Mr. McManus.
Aye.
Ms. Walker.
Yes.
And Mr. Wildebohr.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Next is there a motion to approve the agenda with the edit?
The move.
Mr. Wildebohr has a first, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bullier, and Ms. Bowie.
Ms. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Bullier.
Aye.
Ms. Justice.
Aye.
Ms. Craybill.
Aye.
Mr. McManus.
Yes.
Ms. Walker.
Yes.
And Mr. Wildebohr.
Yes.
Agenda is approved as amended, and may we stand for our moment of silence?
I think we should.
All right. Thank you, you may be seated. Next item on the agenda are our information items. First one is COVID-19 updates. We are going to have presentations this morning from our Public Health Department and from the ABC Collaborative, and I believe who are we bringing on first from your house, the Collaborative or Public Health?
I don't have the agenda, who's ready, the Collaborative?
Yeah, I didn't know, the Collaborative, all right, we welcome the ABC Collaborative. And Ms. Barnum, do you want to do an intro for this? Is it Dr. Akimboyo again?
They're ready, yes.
All right.
You can.
Yes, please, thank you.
Sorry, good morning, I am chair of board members, members of the public. We have Dr. Akimboyo on with us from the ABC Science Collaborative, and then after she has presented, the Health Department staff and I will join you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Akimboyo, welcome back.
Thank you, thank you so much, thank you to everyone here. I will jump right into it, I know we have a number of things to discuss today. Could you please go to the next slide? For those that may not know of our existence, just as a reminder, there are three specific aims. We've tried to ensure that we are sharing the data to encourage and to allow for superintendent and school leaders to make data-informed decisions. Our goal has been to deliver educational resources when other policymakers, but we try to share the science behind the policies. Next slide, please. As we've learned over the last couple of months, my goal is just to show the updates since the last time I spoke. So, we know that the three Ws work, we know that in all settings, and particularly in schools, and we've shared the 12 principles with all of our school districts, and I know we have representative from the school districts to talk through how these have been implemented, but it's important to ensure that there's transparency around the data. We have public dashboards related to school infections that occur in the school setting or spread in the school setting, and leveraging school-based metrics. Community metrics are important, but more important is really what's happening in the school setting. Next slide, please. And we go on to highlighting that we've seen a lot of school districts report pandemic fatigue, anticipating this and incorporating it into the plan is certainly important, and I'm not going to go through all of this in detail, but I wanted to go to the 12th principle, which is walking then running. So, one thing we've seen that has been successful is learning from Plan, when we're in Plan C, Plan B, prior to getting to Plan A, you can know that the district is doing as well. Next slide. This is something we've shared before, so no single intervention is perfect at reducing spread. All of these things are additive, and I have, I think, one side at the end. One more thing we can now add to this switch piece model is vaccination, so we can talk about how that impacts the school setting. Next slide, please. So, what have we learned in the last couple of months? So, since the last time I spoke with you, the data, we've had increasing data from October, November, and December, and the difference between those, so this was early data from September, that showed that in the school setting, even thinking of the schools as mostly being hybrid, but in the school settings, we're not seeing a lot of spread. When you look at rates in teachers, staff members, and students, the rates are pretty low. That being said, since October, we've had holidays stacked up on each other, where people chose to gather in person and have unmasked events, and we think that may have led to increased spread. And also, as you all know, we've started to see some change in viruses, the mutations, the variants. This is what viruses do, we've seen that happen, particularly in the UK, that has likely now been spreading in the US, and there is some concern that the newer strains of virus can have increased spread, and so that may have changed what we're seeing in terms of the pattern of spread. But knowing all of that, Dr. Oster from Brown University has updated her data, so the graphs on my right, the Y-axis is just showing the percent of COVID-19 rates in school over time, including November and December months, looking at all school-age kids and staff that work in different levels of school, elementary, middle, and high school, and we continue to see low rates. As we've seen cases in communities go up, we have seen cases in schools go up. We've just not seen a concurrent spread within the school setting, so that rate has not necessarily gone up. Again, the caveat here is, a lot of schools have been in hybrid, as you can see in the pie chart. Some of them have started to incorporate in-person, and that data is still trickling in, so we don't have a ton of data from in-person, particularly when everyone is back, and in our state right now, it's just K through five, that can be back fully in-person. Next slide, please. And I think the statement we made, I was just sharing, the statement we made previously remains the same. So, even if in the US, we've not seen a lot of data from in-person in the Plan A form, across the world, so particularly in Europe, they've had in-person education and have published and shared their data. One thing they've done that somewhat is informative is, some of them have included testing. So, this is a summary from England, looking at schools, they call the higher levels of schooling secondary schools, so primary, elementary, and secondary schools across different counties. Some of them were high prevalent or high positivity rate in some cases, and some were in low prevalence, and they included staff and students. They tested them prospectively, so forward-looking, they tested them over time in the November month, and they were estimating positivity rate in staff and student. And what they saw, even with high and low prevalence, if we go to the next slide, so what they saw is the rate continued to reflect what I showed with the Emily Oster data a couple of slides ago, that we're seeing, even when you prospectively test, if you perform all the protocols within the school setting, we're seeing low rates of spread in schools. Are we going to pick up on some cases that may have been asymptomatic when you start to test? Absolutely. Are we going to see more cases if you see community cases go up? Are you going to see more cases amongst those that work in school, attend school in person, or say, for example, just facilitating entrance into schools such as bus drivers? Yes, you will, but those protocols prevent spread, and they're saying this in England as well. The caveat here is, some of this data were in the context of not masking. We have continued, so we, within the Collaborative and CDHHS toolkit, and the CDC has continued to advocate for masking in the school setting, and that's essential to a successful reopening in person. Next slide, please. We have to show some European data again, because they've had more experience with in-person schooling when everyone is back, as compared to us here in the US. Here again, they were looking at counties with low or medium prevalence, so much lower than we're seeing here in North Carolina, they were less than 150 cases per 100,000. And they, this was in the context of rising cases in 15 to, five to 13-year-olds, they were performing tracing and testing of their contacts to see those that were infected. They, in this case, they also didn't have masking in schools, not something we advocate for, but they did some of the other things. They were cleaning, they were distancing, and encouraging people to stay home when sick. This was in Norway. So, what did they find? Next slide, please. Going through the table, I won't go through each column, but across the different age groups, so younger, elementary to about middle school, they traced eight in the younger group and five in the older group, and most of them were exposed or acquired COVID-19 from home. Some of them did come to school with symptoms, which oftentimes increases the risk of spreading in school. But the key thing here is, they looked through all of their contacts, so some of the kids, they had over 100 contacts with children, and they had 45 contacts with adults, from the five to 10-year-olds, just looking at the table across the board, while the 11 to 13-year-olds had 86 contacts with children and 13 with adults. The take-home here is, there was no evidence of secondary spread, even in the context of no masking. While I certainly understand there's so many factors that involve attending school in person, monitoring for symptoms, getting access to tests, and retaining the choice of how to educate kids safely, I think the take-home point here is, we're continuing to see evidence that suggests that in-person schooling is not the driving force for spread in the school setting. Next slide, please. And this was what the CDC was trying to show here. So, they recently released this from a study in Mississippi, where they looked at children less than 18 that were getting tested, again during a peak in that area, September to November. It's about 400 participants, a number of them, about half were, less than that, were positive, and some were negative, and they were comparing what they did in the 14 days prior to their positive test. Over 50% of the kids in the study were identified as non-Hispanic Black. What they found was what we've been saying and what we've seen in our data here in North Carolina. When you compare the kids that tested negative to the kids that tested positive, school attendance in person, even with practices that we may not necessarily support, so we should be masking in the school setting, but school attendance was not associated with a positive result. What was associated with getting positive results for COVID? It was attending a wedding, attending parties, attending playdates or funerals. Some of these things are necessary, but those may be settings where people take their mask off for whatever reason, and it increases the chance for spread. So, bringing it home, next slide, please. We have gone through our data, we've shared some of this early data in prior settings, we are still working through, I know everyone would love to look at Plan A data, we don't have a ton of Plan A data due to the break in December, but we've published this, this has now been peer reviewed, that has been the change since the last time we spoke. The numbers are still the same, so it was early in the course of the pandemic. I would like to point out that of the 11 districts participating, while North Carolina rates were more in the 200 to 300 cases per 100,000, within those districts, we did see as high as 400 cases per 100,000, and we've continued to collect their data and monitor it with them, and some of those districts are as high as 900 cases per 100,000, and we have not seen a change in the pattern of spread within the school setting. So, over 700 cases reported, just community cases, 32 cases of spread in the school setting, and as we said, no instances of child to adult, but not all of them were tested, and certainly some may have been asymptomatic, there may have been some asymptomatic infections, they're just limitations of the data. The chart to my right is showing the pattern within the counties, you can see that exponential sharp increase in the dashed line, which is showing the case count per thousand residents in those counties, as compared to what we saw in the participating districts that were in-person, in-school, in-hybrid. Next slide, please. The schools that are in Plan A, so in-person, for North Carolina, the data we have is in-person but K through five. This does not include middle and high schoolers, because of the limitations around what the guidance is for opening schools in person here in our state. We have now had data from over 40,000 staff and students. Due to the break, we do not have the full data on the number of primary infections that has slowly trickled in, but secondary cases, so spread in the school setting, the only ones reported were 14, again suggesting that likely very low numbers. But there has been more and more evidence of pandemic fatigue, we're hitting some rough months ahead, and rough weeks ahead, and so trying to stay on top of this with whatever is in our arsenal would be important. Next slide, please. So, what are the take-home points here, and what's different from the last time we spoke? I think some of the things haven't changed. When there are cases in the communities, there will be cases in schools. We do need to track what's happening in our communities, our schools reflect the communities, and access to testing, resources for tracing, even just resources for substituting teachers may be directly impacted by what's happening in the community. But cases in schools does not always mean that we should be seeing COVID-19 spread in schools, and so using NCDHHS toolkit, the protocols you've all shared, and what the CDC has shared, we should see rare spread in schools. And the data we have, we will continue to update it as quickly as we can get it and analyze it and share with you all, but it's not just about us, this is data we're seeing from other states, other countries, even when they're not perfectly compliant with what they should be doing such as masking, there is low spread in the school setting. The discussions around schools are broader than just what's happening around COVID. We do have to consider people with special needs, people that may have been disproportionately impacted by being in school in person in the past, so there may be other things that come up, but the metrics about what's happening within the school building should really be what we're focusing on at this point. Next slide. I think we included one or two slides on immunization, not necessarily because it directly would impact your conversation today, but we've had a number of questions around this. So, if you could just allow me to run through a few talking points on immunizations, I think it will help, as we plan, not just for the next few weeks, we do have to consider COVID-19 in our plans for the next school year. So, next slide, please. As we all know, at this point, we are definitely phases of this, this is not determined by any one physician or nurse, this has been pushed through from the CDC and the state, so there are phases for vaccine distribution, probably could be a little faster. We've kind of shifted from Phase 1A to Phase 1B, and the age for Group 1, Phase 1B, it sounds like it will be lowered to 65, but right now, it was anyone over the age of 75, you should be able to get an appointment, or get your vaccine through your local health department, through your provider or local health department. The good thing here is, we're already in Phase 1B, and educators are part of Phase 1B. We're not quite at Group 2 or 3 yet, educators are frontline essential workers. We expect that we should see more educators vaccinated over the next week, few weeks, two months. At the pace we're going, is the number I heard yesterday, which likely reflects true, we would need to be vaccinated three to four times more than what we're doing each day, if not more, and do that every single day for the next nine months to even get through our state. So, I anticipate that this will take a while, but we should start to see more educators vaccinated soon. Vaccination is one more layer in our protective barrier, but getting vaccinated doesn't mean we're going to stop everything we're doing. Until we get a good number of people in our community protected, we are going to have to remain masked and make plans that incorporate reducing COVID-19 spread in schools. Next slide, please. So, we know about vaccines, we know what works, we've talked about some of our successful strategies, and now we have new conversations around variants or new strains. As a reminder, the virus that causes COVID-19 is an mRNA virus, it's just a descriptive term for the genetic material in this virus, and they mutate, they don't have a proofreading tool, so when they replicate, they just mutate, this is what they do. So, it's not surprising to see mutations. The ones we're more worried about has been, the variant that has been described from the UK, another one from South Africa. The reason people are worried is, it may be leading to increased spread, because it attaches a little bit better to our cells, and it could lead to some false negative results, depending on the test you're using. The good thing here is, there has been no change to clinical disease, so we don't expect to see more people in the hospitals or more people dying because of this mutant strain, and these mutations are not mutating against masking. Masking still works, distancing and cleaning still works, and we think vaccines should work, there's been one or two papers in the last week that show that the vaccine should work, so I'll continue to advocate for when, for getting your vaccine when and if it's available to you. Next slide, please. And I'll pause here, Dr. Zimmerman couldn't join us, she had a conflict in her arrangement this morning, but we're both available, and I'm here to answer any questions that come from us. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Dr. Akimboyo. Is there anyone on the board that would like to ask any questions?
Yes, please.
Okay, Mr. Bullier first, and then Ms. Justice next.
Thank you very much, Dr. Akimboyo. My confusion comes from the numbers in Plan A in North Carolina, there are six districts, 40,000 students. I see no real increase, no dramatic increase in spread compared to Plan B, and yet, I'm confident that those six districts are not socially distancing, wouldn't that be a correct assumption? Socially distancing to the six feet.
So, that's correct, because of the practical nature of getting all of the kids, at least those that have committed to coming in person, of the six districts that we're working with that have reported being in Plan A, they are currently using about three feet, but a number of them have aimed, they're aiming for six feet or as much distance as they can, but some of them have practically used three feet in the classroom. During unmasked moments such as lunch, they do increase the distance to ensure that they're reducing the risk of spread.
Okay, so would it be fair, then, to say that the data suggests that we can control the spread of COVID-19 within our schools with three feet and masks?
With all of the protocols we've mentioned, I think the data is still early. Remember, in Europe, they've been using three feet much longer than we have, they use a meter and they've used three feet. So, I think the data suggests that, yes, it's possible to minimize the spread within the school setting, even if we reduce the feet between students, but I want to be cautious. We are seeing massive rates in our communities, and the behavior, so masking behavior, hand washing has reduced over time, so I think we need more data to confidently state that. But yes, I would agree, the data from Europe and from all of some of our colleagues that have already been in Plan A suggests that you can do it successfully.
Thank you, doctor.
Ms. Justice?
Oh, yes, so from all the information you've shown, most of these studies and this information that you have presented to us are, pretty much ends in November, the beginning of November, and I believe one study I read yesterday that was presented by the ABC Collaborative, coming out of Duke, and which is being referred to by a lot of people the last two days, I think... think the governor even mentioned it yesterday, those studies, that particular study was based on schools that were in the hybrid model, is that true?
That's correct. Our published data is from early on, with our work in schools, we have continued to collect data, but what was published and what has led to a lot of conversations in the last couple of days was based on data from closer to October, so September, August, September. I will state, though, that the counties that participated, so not looking across the state, if you look within the counties, their rates were significantly higher than the state, and they still continue to report low spread. But yes, the state is in a much different place than it was at that time, and we will share additional data as we see it come through, but it takes a little bit to get the data, clean it up, analyze it, and share it publicly.
Yeah, this is a lot of data coming out really fast because it's very important. I noticed that one of your studies was from England, and England has since closed everything down because of the increase that's going on, and we are not sure to the extent, is this correct, that that virus that was identified, the mutation that was identified in England, we're not even sure to the extent if it is possible that it's here in the US now, correct?
We know it's in the US. We, just thinking through what has happened in the last couple of months, we travel, pretty sure it's in the US. We have not yet, as of waking up this morning, so things change minute to minute, we've not yet identified it in North Carolina, but that's just a matter of time, it's likely already here. That doesn't mean everything we're doing would not work. I think masking still works. And yes, you are correct, so the UK opted not to require masking in schools, which I personally think is problematic. I think masking certainly is important, and that was partially why their decision to shut down included schools, they shut down everything as they're trying to manage both the variant and everything else around COVID. But more recent conversations in the UK have involved reopening schools, particularly the elementary, so for us, K through five, for them, primary schools, because they, with masking, because they realize that that can be done safely.
Now, your study here in North Carolina, and you said that they were hybrid models and they ended in November, and most of the ones have been presented today, let's fast forward to today, which is what we need to look at. A lot of the schools that are part of your collaborative, Wake, Mecklenburg, Durham, I could go on and on to several others, have closed down their schools, at least until next week full time because of the increases in numbers, is this correct, in the communities?
Yeah, we tried to keep track of all the boards, but yes, a number of them are still closed, just as a reminder, we work with a number of school districts, we do not, we present the same data, but we're not, we're not part of that decision making, that depends on the school boards.
Oh, right, it's, it is our decision, and what you are seeing, those school boards have decided to keep their schools, in fact, some of them were closed, I believe it's Durham's closed until June, so they have made a decision from the numbers they're seeing currently to do this, from their perspective, correct?
I'm not sure all of what went into that decision making. I don't necessarily think it was directly related to the evidence of our spread in schools, I think there were some other factors that were included in that, but I cannot speak for that board. But yes, you're correct, DPS has chosen to remain in Plan C, I believe, through the school year.
I would like to recognize Mr. McManus, please, he has a question, and then we'll come to Ms. Crable.
Sure.
Thank you for being here today. How many school districts are there in North Carolina?
So there are over 100 school districts, we're not working with all of them.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, there's 100, there's one per county, and then we still have maybe double-digit city school systems, like Whiteville, Columbus County, okay, so over 100. Your data, if I'm correct, you had six districts for Plan A, and only 11 for Plan B. That's less than 10%.
Yes, so that's correct, so we're working with.
Of the school districts reported, okay.
Yes, so that's correct, these are low numbers, and this is why I have constantly contextualized where we're getting our data from. So the data we've chosen to analyze are those that are complete. So we're trying not to skew the data one way by only taking people that are report positive, or people that report this portion of quarantine. 11 districts have opted to share complete data that we were able to analyze, we're working with over 50 districts, or more than half of the districts in North Carolina, across city and county-based districts, however, not all of them have consistent data reported. And so we, through the pandemic, we've been forced to make decisions, a lot of times without any data, and so our efforts here were to ensure that we at least had something to start with. It's not the most robust, but it's better than what we started with, which is no data at all.
I apologize, but 10% is really not a good assessment tool, but you did what you had, and I understand that, and I thank you.
Ms. Crable?
Yes, Dr. A, hey, if you've talked about one of my questions, please, I'm getting old and my hearing is not as good as it can be, so I'm trying to understand a little bit of the background of where you conducted the survey, so that I can in my mind, you know, figure out how that fits with what we're trying to decide right now. So I, in any of your studies, were you taking into account what the community positivity rate was and what the community spread was, especially in your European analogies?
Yes, so in all of the, both with the districts we worked with and in the studies that we've shared, we're trying to highlight how it compares to what's happening here. And one way to do it is really the case per population. Not a lot of places necessarily use the positivity rate because that can be influenced by testing practices, we see that we are now testing more around holidays, so you may see positivity rates artificially go down or stay the same, but that's not because we're improving, it's just that we're ballooning our denominator, we're testing more people. So as we go back to our usual ebb and flow, you can see that rate settle out. All of that to say is we've used cases per population, and that's what I was referring to, and that's what the county alert system uses. A lot of the studies in Europe had lower cases per population, but some of them were as high as some of the counties that we're working with, and so up to 400. And recently, we've had counties that had up to 900 cases per 100,000 people, so high community rates of spread, and they continue to report the same thing. To answer your specific question, the breakdown, and we try as much as we can, we work with numerous counties, they've publicly shared their data, but while I have a long table of each county and the breakdown of the student demographic and the staff and student number, I think the practical point is they cut across smaller and larger districts and reflect the student demographic and staff demographic here as well.
Okay, and so one follow-up to that, you had mentioned that we're still very early in our data study, because obviously we haven't had the pandemic before, so you had to, you know, jump in and get started. Do you feel that we can accurately extrapolate the data that we're getting from your studies in Plan B, two studies in Plan A, in general, and then with the, in comparison with larger community spread? Because from what you just said, and what I think I'm hearing you say, is that community spread really doesn't play a part, but most of your studies were done with a smaller community spread, so I just was wondering how, how can we extrapolate that and, and help me understand, you know, that?
Yes, I think we can extrapolate success in Plan B. It would be hard to say that everything that has happened in Plan B will directly translate to Plan A, because there are some key differences, particularly around distancing, that I think most schools would have to face. I doubt, I think, except for smaller schools who just have a lot more space, and if you're only focusing on K through five, you have some flexibility, most schools have to incorporate less distance if they shift to Plan A. So I do think we need more data, but from the little amount of data we have with all the caveats around using limited data, schools that were successful in Plan B, that is the strongest determinant of being successful in Plan A, and success can be defined in a number of ways. In this case, we've defined it as reopening schools without necessarily leading to spread within schools or spikes within schools.
Thank you, Dr. Akonboyo. Is there anybody, okay, to the right, we'll go to Mr. Wilderbor and then Ms. Walker.
Throughout your presentation, it seemed that we talked a lot about social distancing, keeping the six feet, or minimally the three feet. My question refers to the buses, where we're talking about three or four inches at best, so you would say that that would not be a good move, as far as having maybe three students to a seat on a bus for up to 20, 25 minutes? Is that correct?
So reducing the capacity or the number of people, number of humans, kids, adults, number of humans in a closed space is important. As a reminder, even when we had, so we, the general we, the medical community, had been pushing the CDC guidance and stating at least six feet, my understanding was that buses had always functioned with three feet, so around, they were already using smaller distances or shorter distances. I think as much as possible, if it's, if the resources are available, ensuring that there's distancing and masking in a school bus would ensure success. Because of the time spent there, and it's 25 minutes, and some people could be longer, I don't anticipate that that should lead to a lot of spread, particularly there's masking. But I don't have any data on the perfect distance in a bus, I can allude to what has happened just with our public systems, our public transportation system has remained running through the pandemic, and as much as we can trace, there are lots of limitations we're tracing, being in a bus or being in the train has not been directly related to getting infected.
Ms. Walker?
Speaking along the line of distancing, I think that's one of the three Ws I think are stressed a lot, and I think my question is, I mean, you may have answered this and I may not have heard you, but when you take away one of the Ws, which is one of the Swiss cheese pieces here, do you have any numbers that, that kind of address the effect of that? Because that is an important component of the distancing models, I mean, that seems to be one of the best things that prevents.
Yeah, I'm not sure if this has been shared before, there were some people that modeled, so this is not based in real life data, but some people have modeled out the additive effect of adding each layer. We have not personally done this in a school setting, but the point is, each addition, masking, distancing, washing your hands, gives you a certain percent more protection. Those numbers are not perfect, and I cannot estimate what happens if you go from six feet to three feet, based on the studies that have actually just looked at spread, when people are within three feet, so that's data we actually have, I can estimate, or at least state that those studies have said that you're not massively increasing the risk. So that's really the number I have, I don't have, it would be helpful if we had the objective, are we changing the risk by 10, 25% or something, but I don't have that, I'm not quite sure anyone has looked at it that way, but we're more than happy to review the published papers and share that back with the board.
Okay, thank you.
Can I follow up just one moment?
This could be the last question, since we don't have public health.
So, Dr. A, I was pulling out my notes from your presentation back in December, which was, you know, very, very enlightening, and when you were talking about that the risk of COVID infection is decreased 85% by social distancing, 77% with always wearing a mask, and 67% by frequently hand washing, and so we're showing the layers, I mean, is that data still, still accurate, as far as you're seeing?
Likely, I'm not quite sure, that was my presentation, but I have seen and heard those numbers, if it was, I'm happy to be corrected, but I have seen those numbers and it's likely still accurate, there were, those estimates came from a period that's different from where we are now, so of course, all of the limitations we mentioned matter, maybe we just need to recalculate what that looks like in the context of rampant spread.
Okay, great, thank you.
Dr. Akonboyo, thank you so much for sharing this research with us, and thank you for sharing your time this morning, we appreciate what you and all the members of the ABC Collaborative are doing to help us stay informed and, and make the best decisions moving forward in this pandemic, so we thank you for your time.
Thank you for the invitation, and please stay safe.
If we could please welcome our members of our New Hanover County Public Health Department, please, to the podium. I believe we've got Ms. Carla Turner today.
Thank you, and thank you to Dr. Akonboyo for the information, and I do want to clarify, those percentages I provided in the December board meeting, and I've got that in your information today.
Okay, sorry, I knew I wrote them down, okay.
But you had, you had those correct.
Thank you.
Nice, thank you. So, I, of course, my partner here, Carla Turner, Assistant Health Director, New Hanover County Public Health, and we wanted to tie some of these pieces from the ABC Science Collaborative together with our own county community data and our New Hanover County Schools data. So the first, I want to draw your attention to, you have a couple of handouts, actually three, so we'll start with the 12 Principles for Safer Schools. You saw this in Dr. Akonboyo's presentation, I provided it to you just in a handout, so you can refer to that as you need to. These 12 principles have really guided us through the process in establishing, not our protocols, because those come from the Department of Health and Human Services for North Carolina in the toolkit, which I like to talk about, the toolkit here, that we've referenced every month. And these 12 really help us kind of apply the research behind this to our application within the toolkit procedures. So the transparency, again, listening to your questions and our communities' questions, making sure that our dashboard is updated with accurate information, I do want to make a clarification that our dashboard remains in effect as of the last remote learning week, I mean, the last face-to-face learning week, as opposed to this week. So the, we always update on Fridays by 5:00 PM, and make sure that that is updated as of 5:00 PM, if it gets updated earlier. But that is from the last time that we had all of our students face-to-face, and this week it will be updated for middle and high school. Otherwise, the numbers will give a false representation, because while students are not face-to-face learning, we don't necessarily get the full reports of any positives or quarantines, okay? So I'm going to clarify that. Secondly, our roadmap for contact tracing, and then, of course, testing is, is up to individual discretion, but our contact tracing mapping is certainly done with our partners from public health, as our school nurses are the main contact tracers for us. And then as we move through, of course, implementing lessons learned, utilizing the ABC Science Collaborative to talk through our data with us, Dr. Akonboyo has been, has made herself available, and others in the ABC Science Collaborative, to talk through our data, and even as late as yesterday, really looking through our own trends and giving us, having some dialogue with us on that. Having certainly conversations about our extracurriculars, the special needs, considering where we are with any pandemic fatigue, such as adherence to the three Ws, because fidelity in those three Ws is going to have a direct effect with how our data looks and how secondary transmissions may occur. And of course, Dr. A mentioned, you know, walking and then running, and so of course, utilizing our data and making decisions on our data in coordination with a higher level research data source. So now I want to take you to your New Hanover County Schools COVID Update Health, your infographic, and I just wanted to pick out a few pieces that, you know, we, that you were, you've been asking about, you've been asking about, and the community has asked about, so that you have this at your fingertips. So the first would be key research, risk of infection is decreased by, so thank you, Ms. Crable, for mentioning those. And this comes from the Department of Health and Human Services, and this is from an October date, this is research collected and reported by our Department of Health and Human Services, but again, that was in October, it was presented in a webinar to us on the 20th of October, so of course, it isn't as relevant at this time because it's not immediately collected, but that is, that is still the existing data that the Department of Health and Human Services has provided us on those individual levels of kind of that Swiss cheese layers of defense, okay? So you've got 85% by social distancing, and then 76% with duration of contact less than 15 minutes, and of course, that's done on the six-foot measure. Now, there is conversation about the three-foot measure, but that is done on the six-foot measure, 77% by always wearing a mask, and 67% by frequent hand washing. Again, these are when the three Ws are implemented with fidelity, and when I say that, I mean implemented exclusively. The next one, I want to draw your attention to our community positives at the bottom, and I'll ask Carla. and I'll ask Carla, Ms. Turner, to speak to you about those community positives, and then I'll come back to our dashboard to show how we're seeing the relevance of the community in our schools.
Thank you, Ms. Varnum. Yes, so you see what we did was we broke down over the last two weeks, the amount of positives we had in various age groups. And Ms. Justice, I included the folks past 17 years old, so we could kind of get an idea of the adult population. So as you can see, we've had, in the last two weeks, we've had 36 positives in the five to 10 age range, 75 in the 11 to 17 age range. But something I want to point out is, these numbers, I can't tell you how many of those students go to public school, how many of them go to private school, and how many of them are 100% virtual learning. We don't have that broken down in our dashboard. But then amongst the over 18 group, that is obviously the significant, the most significant number of our positives. Again, I can't tell you where, we don't keep track in a spreadsheet as to where these people work, where I can pull that data out for you. But I will point out of the, we have had 275 positives in the 50 to 64 age group, and as Ms. Varnum, we shared last time we met, your staff is about, about 43% of school staff is in the 50-plus age group. So just to kind of point that out. So that's where our numbers are right now, as of yesterday.
Are there any questions for Ms. Varnum or Ms. Turner regarding COVID-19 updates?
Ms. Adams?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask you? I was wondering how the vaccine rollout is going. I know last time you gave us an update, and I know we've talked to some of the county commissioners about that, and is there a shortage? And what is the timeline for getting the second group of teachers in there?
I'll start with your first question. In New Hanover County, the vaccine rollout is going very well. We have given, I'm going to look back at Donna and Phillip, 98, 98% of our vaccines that we received, we have been able to administer. We are also able to share some of that vaccine with our, with some community partners who are able to vaccinate to help us get to that 75-plus crowd faster. So yes, we've been doing vaccination clinics up through yesterday, and we will start again on Thursday for our 75-plus population. I can't really tell you when I'm going to be able to move in to Group Two of Phase 1B, but we are actively planning on how we want to do that when the time comes. If any of you, I know you all have been watching the news, the federal government is looking at, again, potentially changing some of the prioritization. The state of North Carolina is looking at their suggestions, evaluating that data, but as of yesterday at 3:30 with the governor's press conference, none of those changes have been implemented. But we do stay tuned to that to see if there's anything that we're going to need to pivot on when the time comes.
That will probably change, because the federal guidelines are 65-plus now. They want to just get everybody above 65. And that's going to change, because you guys had the Group Two teachers that are 50-plus in that second group, and then the third group was the teacher, the rest of the staff and teachers. So that might actually bump that back a little, you think, if the state adopts that?
It could, just depending on what the state of North Carolina decides to implement. But yes, we are watching that very closely to see what, how that's going to turn out for the state and then the county.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any other questions?
Yes, here, and I know we've talked about this before. What's going on with the nurses and the schools? How, is that going with having coverage?
We are actively interviewing for our final vacancy, and we hope to offer a position by the beginning of February for our final school nurse position.
Ms. Varnum, I believe is going to discuss that in the transition plan.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And can I make, well, go ahead.
I do have a question.
Mr. McManus.
I apologize. In today's paper, big article about the worst day, the largest number of deaths, you're quoted as saying that New Hanover continues to see case counts increase, the numbers will continue to rise due to a lack of widespread public commitment to wearing face coverance, avoiding gatherings, and maintaining physical distance from others, and frequent hand washing. Plan A, as I understand it, will have no distancing, at least two people average on a bus seat. And according, again, to what I think I understand, so please correct me, three feet, probably it's not going to be maintained in the classrooms as an average.
What I can say to that, Mr. McManus, is there's kind of like apples and oranges. I always, I keep saying, education does not equal compliance. We can put the message out every day to stay six feet apart, wear your mask, and wash your hands, but I can't, I'm not out there able to mandate the community to do that when I don't see it happening. I feel like in the school system, and Ms. Varnum can speak to this much better than I can, it's a little more of a controlled environment as far as trying to make sure those various options are implemented. As far as the three feet, I will tell you, in doing some research this morning on close contacts, the CDC is still saying that a close contact is within six feet. I see nothing with anything less than that, so. And I know these are all things that the school system is taking into account. Yes, sir.
Do somebody else have a question?
Anyone else on this side? No. Ms. Justice?
Okay. You were closely with Brunswick County Health Department, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. And I think it was Town Creek was one of their schools that has been closed down because there was the largest cluster in the state, which is, you know, is our next neighbor over. Also, within that school itself, it was, it has been proven to have been transmitted within the schools, and possibly from student to teacher, and vice versa. Is that true?
I can't speak specifically to that. We, our relationship is more so with the Health Department, their school nurses are not public health staff in Brunswick County. Their school nurses work for their Board of Education. So the information I have is just information that I've read in the media, and we've had conversations with the Health Director. So I can't speak specifically to that, Ms. Justice. I'm sorry. I can't confirm that.
Well, thank you, though. I was wondering if you had actually talked to them about it.
Yes.
As always, thank you so much, Ms. Turner, for being here. We appreciate you sharing your knowledge, and thank you for all that you're doing for our county. Appreciate you. All right.
Okay. I'm going to move through the dashboard and then the matrix as quickly as possible. So I want you to still hold on to your infographic here. I want to draw your attention to some summaries of our dashboard, okay? So on the right side at the top, New Hanover County Schools Dashboard. Again, I'm prefacing with during Plan B, okay? During Plan B, we had 478 quarantines. Those quarantines were determined because close, they were determined to be close contacts where there was a potential for exposure. That resulted in six positives. That's secondary transmission. And so I've broken down those six positives for you. And this is done in collaboration with the Health Department, because our school nurses, again, are the contact tracers, and our school nurse supervisors are the ones who balance out this data with us. So one, student-to-student transmission, one student to staff, two staff to staff, and two staff to student. Okay? That's how the six transmissions broke down. That's our secondary transmission. So next, I want to draw your attention to below that, where you see 271 positives in Plan B. If you looked at our dashboard yesterday, you would see 280. We're going to clarify that none of those were prior to Plan B, okay? And so we weren't collecting full data on our students. We were just collecting on any that reported, and certainly on our staff. So in Plan B, 271 positives, all but those six were community cases, okay? In that breakdown, I wanted you to see this, 192 students, but given that we have about 25,000 students, that's 0.8%. So the rate is 0.8, okay? And then 79 staff, and that's about 2%. I want to give you a little bit more information, if you want to jot this down. I want to break down those students for you. Of that, that number, the elementary rate, because again, in talking with Dr. Akonboyo yesterday, it's really, it's really much more important to talk about rates, because that puts it in perspective based on the population size. Elementary, 0.2%. Middle school, 0.2% rate. High school, 0.5%, okay? And so then I want to take you to the risk matrix indicators. I'll give you the overall, that our school-level data indicates an overall moderate risk, which, if you'll move to your matrix. So this is where we have the key considerations for the dashboard at top, and then you move into the second page, and it reminds us that we've got three levels of risk, moderate, elevated, and high. And I've taken it almost like I was doing chart paper for you. So the date at the top, 12/18/20, again, as of 12/18/20, the last day of full Plan B, the last full week that we had. We are, we are in an elevated risk for the number of schools with cases, okay? And that number is 34. So we're at the top of that elevated. Schools with quarantined individuals falls in the moderate. So again, that's at least 25 quarantined individuals. We fall in the moderate on that. And I've got specific examples by school on the bottom, okay? So I'll move to school level, and Ms. Turner, speak up if there's anything you want to add. As we move to school level, the risk, and this would be done by school, so I'm going to give you the number of schools that fall into that, as you see here. Cases in a school, number of students and staff at a specific school who've tested positive within 14 days, that number is, 27 schools fall in that moderate range, have had zero to one cases. In the elevated, we have 15 schools that fall in the two to 10 cases. And in the high range, we have three schools greater than 10. And those are three of our traditional high schools. The next area is school clusters. We have zero school clusters in the past 28 days. We have had one record of a school cluster in October, and we have not had since then. So that's at a zero, which still falls in the moderate, because there is no low risk in the risk assessment. And then at the bottom of that, individuals in active quarantine, we have 44 schools in the moderate with less than 15, one school in the elevated. Again, keep in mind, this is in active quarantine due to an exposure at a school. Because if we can more carefully monitor or calculate the difference between exposure at school and exposure in community, we have a better understanding of the implications of what happens in the school environment. Because as Ms. Turner said, it's a much more controlled setting. Okay? And we have, again, one in that elevated and zero in the high. And I want to draw your attention to the last page, the district and school operations. In every area, we fall into that moderate. So of course, again, there is no low risk. So everything is in the moderate right now as far as our ability to staff and handle operations. And as Ms. Turner mentioned, we are operating with one school nurse vacancy, and so if you want to make that note, in the area of nurses, one vacancy of 40 positions.
Can I ask a question about nurses, actually? We received a few emails that alluded to the fact that there, that there's a rumor that nurses will be pulled to provide the vaccine when there is a large-scale rollout. Is that true?
We are looking to work with Ms. Varnum and Dr. Faust to determine if we need to pull, not everyone at one time, if we need to pull staff that we can work out so that there's no coverage issues left in the school. Our priority right now is to vaccinate as many people as we possibly can, as quickly as we possibly can. Keeping in mind, that depends on how much vaccine we get. We have no control on the amount of vaccine we get. The state tells us what we're getting, and then we get it. And we just, we plan based on what comes from there.
Thank you. Ms. Walker?
Ms. Varnum, all these numbers are obviously from Plan B as of December 18th, or wherever the date is. So it seems to be that with the six foot, with all the three Ws we're following, this is about, this is where we are. So I just wanted to just confirm that that's the case, because I know we're looking at A, and we don't have numbers for that. But in B, this, these are our numbers.
Exactly.
Yeah. It seems to me, and I'm just making an opinion, that it seems manageable under the, you know, with the distancing and all the things that we're supposed to do with protocol, and cleaning, and the buses, et cetera.
Right. And as Dr. Akonboyo mentioned, and I'll just, I'll just reference this, but again, in the particular size data calculation they're doing, which is not going to be as large as we might want it to be, it's not across the entire state or beyond. But similar Plan A experiences when Plan B has been implemented successfully, which we would call this a successful implementation, because our, our transmission rates are so low compared to community rates. And so she drew the conclusion that similar Plan A experiences would be strong where Plan B was implemented strongly. But again, that's in, you have to take that into calculation with the effects.
That looks like that's all the data that the doctor used as well. A lot of it was, a big part of the pie was looking at Plan B implementation and numbers. So I just wanted to confirm, I mean, obviously, it's obviously stated it is B, so I just wanted to confirm that we're seeming to manage it, is what I'm saying in B.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Crabill, do you have a question?
Yes. So I'm looking down through your matrix, and in the, I'm just, I'm wondering how, what it would do to our matrix with the additional people that we've had, you know, since December the 18th, especially since we've only been in school for a short period of time. Of course, there's no elementary data on that, because we haven't been there. So do you, do you know, like, off the top of your head, where, if that changes us on the matrix because of that?
Yes. So it would not change, we wouldn't calculate the schools with cases. So basically, that page three, it wouldn't calculate for the page three, because we don't have accurate data on all student cases. They just don't get reported when students aren't face-to-face. And so we know that as you guys get an update broken down by student and staff, you can see that in your latest update this week, that that's, that number's a little wonky, and so we don't believe it's an accurate measure. But I'm glad you asked this question, Ms. Crabill, because page four, which is the district and school operations, where we are looking at the moderate risk all the way down, that is as of today. So we have calculated, thank you for asking, we have calculated with all of our schools and through operations with Mr. Anderson, that we are operating at above 90% in every of the, every one of these areas. So that's current.
Okay, thank you. So in, in your risk categories, they're, they're all, the overall ones are good categories, but the, the thing we're measuring, I have a little bit of a question about for you. So in child nutrition, we're measuring are our cafeterias staffed, but we're not really measuring, do we have the space for kids to eat lunch in the buildings with their masks off, less than that? So let me just, let me, you can probably answer all this at one time.
Yeah, I think, Ms. Crabill, that is probably going to fall under our transition conversation, or is this the appropriate place to have, to ask the question?
Well, since she's talking about, yeah, I didn't know, since we were talking about the matrix. I can ask my question later.
It's, it's up to you guys.
Okay. I'll just, I'll just wait till the time, so I can make notes myself.
Okay, great, thank you.
But the one other question was on the, on the matrix that you gave us, or the, the, crap. When you were giving us, was it on the floor? I'm sorry. All my belongings are everywhere, I'm so sorry. So you, you mentioned to us the, like, the elementary rate, and the middle school rate, and the high school rate on that sheet, but my papers are all over the place. Oh, the numbers. So of the, is that percentage calculated by the total number of elementary school kids that are in our system, and not necessarily the total number of kids that have been in our buildings? Because a lot of people are remote, so I didn't think it would be, well, this is my opinion, but is it accurate for us to include them in a percentage when they're not even in the building to be calculated?
Right. Because some have shifted back and forth, that is a total elementary, total middle and total high school population amount, so that we can see the rate across our entire population. But if we drilled it down, we'd have to pick a different timeframe. And so I'd have to do a snapshot, which I can definitely do that if that's requested at any point in time, take a snapshot of how many are in school in a particular week or two-week period, and then do that, and extrapolate that. But this is based on total population.
So like, in a Plan A model, that would be completely accurate, because we, they're in, well, not even really, because there's still some kids that aren't in school. Okay, well, that's, that's helpful, just to help me process the numbers. Thank you.
Thank you for the questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Varnum. We appreciate you, and thank you for all the work that you and your team have been doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Varnum.
All right. Next item on the agenda, and hold on to all that COVID information for our transition conversation, but in the meantime, we are going to have a presentation, I believe also for Ms. Varnum, for student support and safety evidence-based instruction. Ms. Varnum, this is you also. I'm sorry.
Don't feel comfortable.
Keeping you running.
Sorry, I had to do closure with my buddy over there. Okay. So, thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. I'm happy to talk to you about our safety programs that have been implemented in New Hanover County Schools over the past year, year and a half. There's a little bit of a time difference on these. So first, I want to talk about the middle school program, shifting boundaries. And this is really about lessons on relationships for students in middle schools. And in this infographic, I evidently like an infographic, and I have great, great staff. and I have great, great staff, the support in that. We provided you with the audience, the program summary, the number of students trained thus far, and then our community partner. One thing I want to highlight is that in the areas of sexual violence prevention, discrimination prevention, harassment prevention, we really rely on our community partners as they are often more trained in specific evidence-based materials. And we want to make sure that we have their participation in our classrooms to co-teach along with our health and PE teachers or our other teachers who are teaching social emotional learning curriculum. So the first one, shifting boundaries, is really, again, evidence-informed and evidence-based are a higher-level standard from research-based. So research-based means that it's been analyzed, and it's been viewed to show some type of result. Evidence-informed and then evidence-based are a higher standard that shows that you can replicate that over time, meaning you can expect positive results from the instruction. So this is about raising awareness and preventing harassment and bullying. But it focuses on healthy relationships and healthy social interactions. So there's problem-solving, resilience, and coping as a part of those. And as you can see, in the past year, we have trained approximately 3,000 middle school students in this area. The next one is bringing in the bystander. And this one is more appropriate for high school. The program summary for this, again, this has not started. This will be starting next week. And again, our partner, our partner for shifting boundaries is Coastal Horizons. Our partner for bringing in the bystander is also Coastal Horizons, where a trained facilitator, and when I say trained, they're trained in this particular evidence-based material. This is encouraging students to advocate for themselves and others in situations of sexual and interpersonal violence or harassment. So it really teaches our students how to approach situations, to identify characteristics, and then learn practical skills for safely and in a healthy and effective way intervening as a peer, not as a person of authority, but as a peer. And I think that's pretty important. And then again, the way they're laid out in five 90-minute lessons, that's based on the way the evidence shows benefit and skills attained. For our elementary, it's been much more interesting trying to find an appropriate research-based or evidence-based material for elementary in this area. And so this one really focuses on abuse prevention and appropriate for pre-K through elementary. And this is really providing students with that language and the tools for articulating their own protection and self-advocacy. And each grade would have anywhere between seven and 10 lessons, depending upon the scope and sequence for that particular grade level, of course, in a developmental approach. And so this was delayed. Our counselor, school counselors, are going to be receiving the training in the spring, and then the implementation will begin in the fall. But many of these concepts are being covered in our social emotional learning as a preface to implementing this particular curriculum material. The next one would be our staff professional development. And this is darkness to light, stewards of children. I know we've spoken about this before. There's a general statute, and I'm really sorry that I don't have the number. But general statute requires that all school staff who come in contact with children be provided with at least a two-hour professional development on preventing sexual violence, sexual harassment in school settings. And we had this implemented and had several hundred staff trained before that general statute went into effect about a year ago. And so we continued with this under the approval of DPI and the State Board of Education in saying that that accomplishes that requirement in the general statute and the intent. And so at this point, we have trained 3,348 staff, which is the vast majority of our staff. We are working, Kristen Jackson, our Director for Student Support, is working with Human Resources to make sure any new staff are trained as they come onboard, as a part of their onboarding. And then also, it's going to be important for our new board members and any other board members that haven't had a chance to participate to be trained. So we'll provide you with that as well. And our community partner is the Carousel Center, which is our child advocacy center for the community. The next one is mental health first aid. And members of the board that were in position at the time, maybe, again, about a year ago. Our community partner of Trillium and our resiliency, school resiliency task force, or Safer Schools Task Force, approached with the idea of providing all staff with youth mental health first aid training. This is, we talked about the dynamics and the logistics of this because it is an eight-hour training, and it has been a face-to-face training. There is now a way to do that in a virtual means, which wasn't in existence prior. But this is really about providing all staff that would be, that work with children with an understanding of signs and symptoms of mental illness and appropriate and responsible and healthy ways to respond, and then also how to refer them to the correct staff for intervention. I know that's a lot of information.
I would just like to say, I'm very impressed at the efforts New Hanover County Schools has been taking in social, emotional health, mental health. This is fantastic that all these programs are being brought to the district. And just thank you very much for identifying such strong programming. And I'm excited to see how many people have actually been trained thus far. Does anyone on the board have any questions?
I would just like to add very quickly that I really appreciate all of these partnerships, Coastal Horizons, Carousel Center. These people have given so freely and willingly to our district, to our students. And these partnerships are really going to continue to bear fruit over the next several years. And thank you very much. So I really do appreciate all the work that everybody's doing. These are important.
Absolutely. We have some amazing staff with those agencies and within our schools that make this happen. Absolutely.
Really good at this. Please don't go anywhere. Could you tell me, what's the ratio of counselors to students? If you know, in a high school, middle, and then elementary?
You're testing me. I do like that. I like that a lot. I don't have that with me, but our high schools have anywhere from four to five. And our high schools run anywhere from, oh, since redistricting. Oh, actually.
That's okay.
I had it in my other stack. I had all the numbers of the schools in case anybody asked me. I can provide you that information. And we, Dr. Faust and I talked about this early on when he arrived. We talked about our number of support staff that we have in place. And this has been a discussion among our Safer Schools Task Force. We have calculated our ratios. And I bet by the time I sit down, Kristen Jackson, who is on the Zoom, is going to text me. And so I'll be able to provide that at some point to you by the end of the meeting. But we have calculated within the past year our ratios by total student population, school psychologist, school social worker, counselor, and then graduation coaches and other support staff.
So the average high school?
Let me give Ms. Crable, and then I'll come over. Yep, thank you.
The average high school, Dr. Smith, I'm going to go with, if we did an average, I'm going to go with 1,800? 17, 1,800.
Okay. So you're talking 300 to 400 per counselor?
Ms. Crable?
Yes. So had you included, I know that in our crisis management team meeting, we've talked a little bit about trying to bring in our subs and our parents to get some of these trainings. And so darkness to light is the one that we just, you know, pandemic put us all on track, I mean, off-track. So do you think that, I mean, are the substitutes getting that at their orientation? Or through all that, so that they at least know that they are reporting person?
I will verify that. But it is my understanding that all folks who are identified as staff have been trained in that. And that is something that Ms. Cox and Kim Cox, our coordinator for substitutes, and Kristen Jackson have worked on together. I do believe that I'm telling you the truth in that. I know that all of our staff, as of a timeframe of a few months ago, were completely drained.
Okay, thank you.
And there is a parent session for darkness to light as well.
Yeah, that's what Ms. Jordan has said, that we just haven't been able to schedule it.
And then Ms. Walker and Mr. Wilderbor.
Ms. Varnum, I just had a question. I know it's related to mental health aspect. I know we've been getting a lot of emails about children that are maybe struggling during this time. And I did watch the video on the staff that are there for students. I didn't know if there's any way to get help to students that are really struggling right now without, with all the changes and being in and out of school like they are. And it kind of relates to the mental health issue. But do you guys have a plan to maybe implement any kind of program? Or figure out how you can reach out to kids that maybe are struggling?
Yes. The role of our school social workers and counselors this year has been very interesting. Especially our school social workers, which we, while we have, you know, several hundred students per counselor, we have a strong number of school social workers that is, that is far and above many school districts, especially of our size, and especially in this area. Our school social workers and school counselors have done an amazing job reaching out to those who are experiencing stress and anxiety over either being in school, not being in school, whatever, have done one-on-one sessions, or two-on-one, two staff and one-on Zoom sessions. We've set up protocols for that so that they are doing that in a safe way with parental support. And either the parent is on or another staff member is on, so that there aren't one-on-one virtual sessions. And they've also been doing safe home visits. We set up, created a safe home visit protocol so that they could go and check in on kids that we had not heard from, so that they're maintaining that communication. So it's been a very interesting school year in that way, and the end of last year as well. But especially this school year, kind of seeing, you know, that the timeline was a little concerning.
Is there any way we can make that kind of a prompt? I know, like, maybe on the homepage, or just something where people can know they can go if they need it? Because I guess sometimes it just gets lost, where people might not know where they can go for that information. And I know that I have been, you know, getting a lot of feedback about, you know, the struggle children are having, especially the younger ones. If there's any way, I guess we can just make it where it's, the information is just more out there for anybody that really needs it. Because it is a hard time for all of us. You know, I don't think there's any person around the world that's not been touched right now by this virus. You know, we've got family in the UK we can't visit, they're in lockdown. And it's just, it's tough. And I just think that we, they need to know that there's a way to get help.
Absolutely. And we still, we have plenty of school-based mental health support slots available so that kids can have their therapies at school if they need.
Thank you very much.
I'll work with communications on that. Thank you. Ms. Varnum, I would like to echo everyone else's opinions on, thank you, thank you,
thank you for all your hard work. And also reaching out to our community partners and thank them. I did have one question about the elementary safer, smarter kids program. Are all, I know in certain other counties, you know, the counselors are used to teaching and they have a class. Is this going to be something that they're going to have to pull out of another class for? Or do our counselors, in fact, at the elementary level, teach?
So that's different at different schools. So this would be a universal implementation, so every student in the grade spans would get it. And so each school, depending upon how they run their specials rotations, whether that becomes a rotation or whether they just do a push-in for different classrooms and run that in a schedule, I wouldn't be able to say that we have one way across the district that that would work. Because it's different based on school size and based on just other factors that are unique by school.
Great. Well, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Justice, did you have one too? Okay. All right, thank you very much, Ms. Varnum. I would like to ask, prior to going to the old business, if we could just take a quick five-minute break before we move in? If that's all right with everyone?
All right. Five minutes.
So I would say there were several modes of communication used to contact families. But yes.
I'm just clarifying the three questions that were asked.
Yes.
Yeah, it does look like you did a lot of work probably knowing that you did. I'm sorry about that. I forgot about this. It looks like you've got, you had a lot of work that you did to make sure that everybody was covered. I was just asking if those were the three questions on the survey with those choices, that's all.
Yes ma'am, we had to have a response from everyone to know how students would be assigned, yes.
Alright, good. And also when you said that students would be, I guess you could say, visiting students? Now you're just talking about virtual, correct? Or you're talking about physically moving some kids to different schools?
So no, we are talking about those students that would be all remote.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright, is there Ms. Crable?
Alright, so a couple of questions for you, Dr. Smith.
Yes.
Then I'll let somebody else ask. Alright, so when you mentioned that we were meeting our class sizes in K through three because, or because we were able to do that, the how, like what percentage do you think of our fourth and fifth grade classes are, I'm gonna call it overloaded, you know, because of we had, when they adjusted and there is no class size limit? So the, how, how, how many schools do you think that we're dealing with that? Like the bigger kids tucked in with more people?
So if I reframe your question, and unfortunately I'm not gonna have an answer for you today, but I surely can get that. If what you're asking me is a comparison to what student numbers were prior to Plan A and what they are as we're going into, to, to, to Plan A, I can definitely get you those comparison numbers. I would offer to you that many of our schools created combination classes in an effort to avoid having, you know, thirty kids in a fourth grade or thirty kids in a, in a fifth grade classroom. But I can provide you with, with, with those numbers.
Cause I'm thinking that that's still going on. I was just wondering, is, is it an isolated incident? Or is that something that we had to kinda do?
Look, and let me see if I can check with Ms. Jethro. She might have a little additional information. Dr. Jethro, could you speak to any conversations that you've had with principals where they have exceeded numbers with fourth and fifth grade?
I think if I can also reframe the question, potentially what is the largest class size we're looking at in four or five?
And, and about how many of those are we talking?
Sure, and I would, I would have to go back as Dr. Smith said and get you an exact number on the largest class size. But what I would say, and I can say, is that was part of the nuance of this. And when the, the slide right before this one where you see the clusters with the schools is because the principals did not want to overload their fourth and fifth grades just because of minimizing social distancing and safety and also because of what is good for instruction and best practice. That's really what created the nuance and their need to collaborate with one another to, in some cases, have visiting students. Because they couldn't just overload their fourth and fifth grade classes in order to be able to accommodate the remote learners or the virtual academy students or the students in the lower grades. So that, that speaks to them being mindful of that and being careful about that.
Okay, and to kinda like follow up on, the reason I'm asking the question, not necessarily, cause I mean, we're used to having big classes on occasion, because that just is what we have, because our buildings are small and we have a lot of people. But what, what, what that feeds into, I'm nervous about, is like lunchtimes, break times, where we're having our masks off for thirty minutes to eat and then a snack and, and just, and breakfast if we have to do all that. So I, that's why I'm just, that's my thought process, not, you know, quizzing you on, you know, did you go over? Because we know we have to, but, so have you guys given, you know, any, I know, duh, I know you've given thought to that. So any overall arching things? I think that's what the majority of parents that I'm hearing from, or I think, not I, I think all of us, you guys probably get them too. That's one of the biggest concerns. So is there any words of calming or, you know, or reassurance that you can give us that plans are there?
Sure, yeah. So under Dr. Smith and under Julie Barnum's direction, Kristin Jackson, the Director of Student Support, and I met with the principals on a weekly basis as they were planning. So once you all made the decision and voted for Plan A, we met with them and worked with them to sorta, to get to this place. And the overarching message, to answer your question, is to minimize exposure. So in all of their decisions and all of their decision making about whether children would eat in the room or whether children would eat in the cafeteria and then moving them down the hallway. If you could answer the question that we are minimizing exposure by doing this, then that would, that would be the, the thing.
Any idea of how many folks said, oh, this is like killing me? Well, that's not even a good word. This, this is, this is really stretching my limits of creativity and innovation.
Well, I, I think we've got the twenty-seven most innovative, creative elementary principals that I can, can speak of. It is my pleasure to get to work with them and I think that it has been, been challenging, the problem solving. But I, I mean, I think that they have, they've done it. I think they've risen to the occasion.
And, and I don't doubt that at all.
We're gonna go to Mr. Wildabour and then Ms. Justice.
Were we able to accomplish having teachers that are teaching only face-to-face and only remote with zero people being asked to do both?
Yes, sir. It was, it was Dr. Faust's desire that teachers would not be doing two different things. I think that we have some instances with our students with disabilities where we have just a limited number of, of teachers for a certain particular area that we, you know, are having to, to work around that. But in terms of the, the general education classrooms, K-5, teachers would be doing one thing.
One of the other, okay, thank you.
Ms. Justice?
She, well, actually, Dr. Jethro is the person I wanted to ask this question of.
If I could add just a little to Mr.
Oh, oh, sorry.
We do have our itinerant teachers who are being asked to serve both populations. But it does also speak to what Ms., what Dr. Jethro just said in terms of, because we have limited staff. But we are working to support those, those folks as well. We've had conversations about shared lesson plans. So would lessen the burden for teachers to create their individual lesson plans to create additional time that they could support. And then also, Ms. Crable, just a little bit, and, and I do believe some of my other colleagues are gonna talk more about the item that's in front of you, but also when our children are not able to face in the same direction, principals have requested additional PPE in the form of a divider so that we've got that barrier for children. And so that would be something that would be in place during those times at, at lunch as well.
Can I ask a follow-up question while you're here?
Yes, sir.
So the information you just shared with me, with the, you know, say, physical education teacher. So a physical education teacher's gonna have to teach all day. And when would they meet with their remote students then? If, if they're, cause with the Plan A, they're teaching five days a week all day long. When, you know, so we're asking them now to add in after-school, like, you know, so the, you know, some of them may also, you know, coach them.
So in those situations, we would have the expectation that they would offer concurrent instruction to their remote students.
Ms. Justice?
And so, you might be able to answer this, Dr. Smith. So in, what is the average class size that you're talking about? I mean, there was like, we know that they're overcrowded and they're, that the state's taking caps off. But what, looking overall, what you're doing when you, when we put, go back to Plan A, what is the average class size of the elementary school?
Just for correction, the state didn't take the caps off.
Well, I meant, well, nevermind. I think I, when I say that, I mean when it was lower. I have very, yeah, I have very, I, I think they should have thought about that.
So K-2, we still had to follow the mandate of each for those class sizes.
Right.
Three, five. What she was saying is that she'll be able to have to get, to give accurate numbers. We, they'll have to run that through Power School to give you the numbers. I don't think she knows those off.
She's probably got some kind of average. I'm not asking for sure. I'm just asking for an average.
So, so for fourth and fifth grade, there is not a class size cap that's been provided by the state? But again, to, to give you those accurate numbers, we would need to just run through Power School. And we can very easily do that and have that to you before the end of the day.
Well, you work with the kids. I'm just trying to get some kind of average.
So what I would say on average, in fourth and fifth grades, you might find anywhere from twenty students to twenty-five students in a fourth and fifth grade classroom.
That's what I'm looking for. Does it, how about the lower grades? Is it smaller?
It's hard to say because we have these remote students and then we have the virtual students who are pulled out. And we also have these students and we don't know, we can't necessarily say, I'm looking for instance at Alderman, two-hundred-and-seventy-eight are enrolled, two-hundred-and-thirty-five are planning to come face-to-face. I can't do a specific divide and say that there are six grade levels. There are three teachers at each grade level because it doesn't calculate that easy, cause you may have X amount, you may have.
That's why I said average. I wasn't asking for exact.
And so they don't, they don't know that right now, so.
Well, between twenty and twenty-five was a good estimate. That's just what I wanted to hear, cause that sounds practical. That's what, you know, considering the pullouts aren't that, there's, you know, there's not that many virtual and, and, you know, remote students when you look at the overall average. That's why I was asking. So, you know, to me, it sounded like twenty to twenty-five was reasonable. I'm not looking for the exact right now. We need to have some kind of average.
Are there any additional questions specifically for curriculum and instruction?
Yes. Okay, so in your virtual, it doesn't look like we, it looks like we've reduced our numbers significantly in virtual from people that started it and then changed their mind. And maybe I'm wrong, I was just kinda looking. But in our last board meeting, Dr. Faust, you had mentioned that if our numbers cut to, if our numbers looked like it might be appropriate, that we could use some central office staffing, not, not central office to be teachers, but that, that the district would help in, or would look into helping, like kinda consolidate our virtual academy? Have we had to do that at all?
We've not. What I would say is that our principals and our teachers, because I know it wasn't just simply principals contacting families, they've really tried to connect with our families and talk to them about the best-fit options. What I would say to you for our families who have chosen Virtual Academy, and we've had just a couple who have now selected it as an option, they've done it for very intentional reasons, because it's the best fit for their family and their current situation. Just this week, I was talking to a principal and we've got a family of a kindergartner. And their situation has changed and so no longer will remote work, nor will the face-to-face. And so we've worked with that principal and now we're gonna add that, that student to our kindergarten roster. But because of the communicate, communication, the connection and the relationships that we have with our families, many more of our virtual academy families have now chosen remote as a better fit or have now chosen face-to-face as a, as a better fit. And I'll tell you, there's no greater power than talking to people and hearing their individual stories because they're not all the same. They're, they're very specific, they're very intentional. You know, a family may have chosen Virtual Academy because of their childcare situation and so they weren't available to support their child in accessing all the remote learning. But now that we are offering and making available to them the face-to-face option, they now want that for their child. So they've gone all the way from Virtual Academy to now face-to-face. And again, it's very nuanced, it's very specific and there's a lot of power in hearing their individual stories.
And then one last question, back to the, I was gonna ask the sub-question that I, I held off on my matrix. So how are we looking for substitute coverage in, like, I know the subs are very, at least in the very beginning they were, about being Plan A. So have we lost any more? Have we picked any more up? I know Kim, Ms. Cox, was surveying people.
And I'll defer to Dr. Coker to speak in regards to substitutes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Smith.
Appreciate it. Good morning, Dr. Coker, while it is still morning.
Good morning. Substitute coverage, so we took a look at just for next week on the nineteenth. And right now, we're at a ninety-five percent sub-fill rate for the nineteenth. And so additional absences may come in and so we'll work to make sure that we get those filled. But the goal would be to monitor that closely. And as we see it coming in, work with schools to make sure that we get those filled.
Okay, I guess I'm, I'm doing the Queen's Gambit thing and I'm playing it out in my mind. What happens if, what happens if we start to see more increase in our schools? Are, are we gonna have subs to cover so that we are never at that one-hundred-and-five limit that we have kind of self-composed on ourself, that we, we have that many openings, we may have to, you know, we need that? Or the ninety-four percent at each school?
If we see the sub-rate, the absences increase, are we going to be able to have subs to fill those absences?
Yes, that's my question. Sorry.
That would depend on the number of absences that we see and the number of subs who decide to take the jobs. Right now, we have a hundred-and-seventy-four active subs. So these are folks who've said, yes, I am subbing, I'm coming, I plan on being present.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Justice, did you have a question also for Dr. Coker?
You said ninety-five percent fill rate right now. So what does that mean? And I might have missed something just a second ago. What does that mean, how many openings physically do we have, not just percentage?
Thirteen elementary apps, openings that required a substitute.
Okay, nothing in middle and high school?
We have fifty-eight total. I focused on the elementary, but we have fifty-eight total absences. And thirteen of those were at the elementary level that required a sub and those have a sub.
Okay, so what you're, I'm a little, so we have fifty-eight, how many subs do we need to, to, to provide a hundred percent? You say we're at ninety-five right now. And you were focusing on elementary. I, trying to get to the number of how many we are down right now, actually down.
So the, we have, I have one sub vacancy that's not filled right now for January nineteenth.
Across the whole district, we only have one sub?
That's correct.
Okay.
Ms. Walker?
My question is maybe for Dr. Faust. I don't know if the district has done any kind of risk assessment as far as what would happen in a worst-case scenario if perhaps we didn't have enough people to cover? Cause we don't have real numbers on what a Plan A would look like as far as spread is concerned or, you know, people being out in quarantine. I know Town Creek had an issue with that where they were putting in, I had read what custodian, you know, to, to cover. I mean, we really do have to look at these kinda things because if that were the case and we did have a shortage, we'd have to go, we'd have to close down the school within, there was no one to teach. So I know we were talking about subs as well, but I would hope the district had done some kind of analysis of what would be the worst-case scenario. And, you know, we obviously don't want that to happen. But, I mean, the reality is we're at the highest we've ever been rate-wise, I mean, community rate, rate-wise. And it's a possibility. So has anybody done that?
So yes, I mean, we do that outside of COVID. When I say outside of that, if there is, at any given point, principals have to say, okay, if X is there, what do I do in my school? So that may mean that a curriculum coach has to fill in for that teacher to substitute. We make parameters inside of the building. When I say we, principals will make parameters inside the building for coverage. And that's where we first start with the coverage. And then we look at it district-wide. But there are people inside the building who can cover classes.
People, what do you mean? Like substitutes or what are you saying?
It could be, let's say, it may be a curriculum coach.
Counselor.
It may be. I mean, a teacher assistant. There are people inside if we were, if we needed that.
And Dr. Faust, it's, it is entirely possible that you have a Town Creek. I mean, that's, that's, I'm sure you're ready to transition immediately and, and provide remote instruction if the worst-case scenario where we didn't have staffing. I'm sure you guys are ready for that.
If, if that were the case, then, then yes. I mean, we, we would know to, to fall in line.
Well, and just to follow up on that, and all the numbers that we've been seeing today are how we've been doing in Plan B and we've been managing it since, as Barnum said, we have. So I guess my thoughts are, we really have not been tested with A and obviously there is a chance that we could be in a Town Creek situation, which I hope not, of course. But I, I don't know, my thoughts are, since it's working, I'm not sure why we would wanna, I'm sorry, Ms. Justice.
Well, I actually, we, we got the numbers from last week when we were all virtual. And according to this, there were fifty-four positive cases reported into schools. Ten of, nineteen of them were students and thirty-five of them were staff. And thirteen quarantined and ten of them were staffed. Now, if we had a full, the schools were all A on elementary, and I know we're focusing on elementary. That's, that's a lot of staff to suddenly be out between COVID and the quarantines involved. That's the kind of risk assessment. It's not like a regular situation. So what kind of, is, short of shutting the schools down if we're so short of staff? I mean, is, is that the only alternative at this point with all these, if this were the case? And that was remote.
What was your question?
Okay, the, the question is, what would you do if you had that many staff out at a time? I mean, across the district.
Did you say fifty-nine?
Okay, we have, the staff itself, last week we had thirty-five staff members that were out, tested positive and we had ten staff that were quarantined. So that is altogether forty-five people.
So I could, I'm gonna venture out and say that that can, that happens outside of COVID. So meaning you're not even in COVID.
Well, on top of, on top of normal.
We would give, that would happen where you would have forty-five people out on a given day. Mondays and Fridays are our hardest, our days. So we would have that.
Well, that's one, but that, you have your normal situation, then above and beyond, you've got the COVID situation now.
So I can't, that, it's hard to answer that question because it's, the question that you asked was if there were forty-five people out. What I was answering is that we do that.
Right.
On the normal. I mean, that may happen on any given day that people are out. But if you're, add another caveat, we would work within the schools to, to provide coverage.
And I know how that works. That means teachers, office people, anybody that you could possibly grab. In Burnsville County, they ended up using custodians. They were actually covering a couple of classes. I'm, I mean, this is a contingency. I'm, I'm just putting that out there because this is something that, this would be forty-five people above those normal people that are out.
So what I'm hearing you say, Dr. Coker, is that we have a hundred-and-seventy-four substitutes prepared to cover absences and those include long-term quarantine absences, not just a daily piece?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Alright.
Thank you.
Eddie.
Mr. Anderson?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I apologize, I don't have a infographic, a nice PowerPoint presentation, but I know. Nonetheless, I have some very important information and good information to share. I, I would, first of all, just like to start off with a reminder that we are operating our Child Nutrition Service under the Summer Food Service for the remainder of the year, allowing students or children eighteen years of age or younger to eat free. And to date, we have served over one-point-five million meals through that program.
Amazing.
Yeah. They've, they've done an excellent job and, yeah, they should, they definitely deserve the applause. Beginning on Tuesday, we are going to be scaling back that program a little bit. We'll have about a dozen sites, school sites with grab-and-go service and about six neighborhood sites that will still continue to deliver meals into those neighborhoods. We made those decisions to reduce based on our current participation rates and the fact that, you know, under Plan A, our students would be, the majority of our students would be in school and they make up a, a large number of our participants in the meal program. So we'll continue to monitor that and we'll see how that goes and we can make adjustments if we need to. Under Plan A, our elementary school students would, do have the option to pick up their breakfast and lunch in the cafeteria. Or they can be delivered to the school. Our child nutrition managers are working with schools to, to make that decision based on the, their needs and the use of the space within their schools. We're also working with school staff to add remote-serving locations so that we can, and including à la carte sales. So we're setting up some kiosks, or so to speak, in, in areas of the building to, that one, it will speed up the process and, and reduce students from gathering, but also allow students to obtain their meals more quickly. And, and then students would return to the classroom to eat. And I know that's been a question and concern. And, you know, where we are not able to social distance by six foot or three foot, we would, we're asking principal or teachers to implement a silent lunch. You know, where all of our students are seated at their, at their desk, they're all facing the same direction. They have a silent lunch while eating and then they could put their mask back on for the remainder of the lunch period while they're in the classroom. Based on the numbers that you had discussed, you know, I, I think it will vary from school to school. You know, how many students will be in each classroom. And it depends largely on the size of the classroom, the shape of the classroom and the furniture that's provided in the classroom. With our buses, I will say we had a, just a few issues this week as we transitioned to, you know, our secondary being in the Plan B, AA, BB, but the face-to-face with our elementary being remote. We've worked through those and I think it was, with those have been resolved. It wasn't, it was just a couple of, couple of cases, but it, it's helped us to be better prepared for Plan A. We are ready for Plan A. New bus routes have been published. They're on the school website. They've been announced in social media and Connect Five calls. And the, the general ed students, those routes changed. I will say there are no changes to routes for EC students, McKinney-Vento students and our secondary students. We talked a lot about how many students would be on each bus. And as we've now, you know, we determine how many students are requesting transportation, how many students will be attending face-to-face. I can give you a little more information on that. First of all, we are going to assign seats. And we'll assign seats as students are, are loaded. We want to load our buses, just like we did under Plan B. We'll start at the back of the bus and work forward and we'll put one student to each seat. Once, once we have one student to each seat, next students will, the, the remaining students will again start at the back and work forward. Based on our routes and our numbers, I would say there are very few buses that have more than forty-eight students or more than two to a seat. That, there'll be very few that have three to a seat. We do have some secondary student, or elementary school students that are riding buses on, on, on secondary, with secondary students. Gregory is a great example. There are very few cases like that, but we have looked at each one of those. And in each case, we're able, there are no more than twenty-four students on the bus. So we're able to continue to, to provide one seat per student on those buses. We continue to work on driver recruitment and retention. We had a couple of drivers that resigned over the, over the holidays. They were leaving to take other, other positions. But on a positive note, our recent efforts have resulted in a number of new candidates. We've had a few new drivers. We currently have three drivers that have their CDL, waiting for the driving test. We have three scheduled for the CDL class. And I think the biggest improvement there is, is working with those new candidates to, to keep them on track and then also bringing them onboard as a monitor once they obtain the CDL. That puts them to work quicker, but it also, they gain some good on-the-job experience. We're still able to cover our routes as well as providing our, a substitute pool, which I think has made a tremendous difference this year. Along with the, we do still will have community stops. And the benefit of those, the community stops is that we do have much shorter routes. Most of our bus routes are, are less than fifteen minutes. The less time they spend on the bus, the better. It minimizes the possibility of exposure. But it has also resulted in ninety-nine percent of our buses arrive to school on time each and every day. So that's been a, a tremendous improvement. In terms of our facilities, all schools will maintain the current signage, processes and procedures that are in place for social distancing outside of the classroom. It's especially true in our, our high-traffic areas and gathering areas. We'll continue to clean and disinfect during the school day and each and every day after school. All schools and all departments have adequate supply of PPE and cleaning supplies on-site. The warehouse, I've verified they've got plenty of stock. The warehouse, I've verified, they've got plenty of stock in, uh, in all areas with supplies and PPE. Uh, there is currently nothing that's backordered, and there is no reason at all that, uh, any teacher or staff does not have the necessary supplies or PPE that they need. And if they, uh, if they do need something, I would just say, for anyone listening, please go to your, your, your principal. And, uh, if you make that request, we'll have that delivered to you, uh, very quickly. In Plan A, for elementary school students, um, in the classroom, we will be social distancing to the greatest extent possible. Uh, there's not a requirement, but, uh, obviously, uh, depending on the number of students, the size of the space, and so forth, that will vary, but we will, um, we will do that to the greatest extent possible. Just as we did in Plan B, um, we have offered to go out and work with, uh, principals, work with teachers, in setting up their classrooms. I think they, I think they have this, I really do. I mean, you know, in, in the schools that I've been to, especially under Plan B, um, they taught me a lot, and, uh, they're, they understand, um, and it, it's not too hard to set up classrooms to, to social distance. And, um, it will vary from space to space, but I'm confident that our, our teachers are doing a really good job of maximizing the social distancing. The, the only, uh, issue we've had voice to us is where we have tables in the, uh, younger grades. The ideal classroom would have individual desks and chairs, all facing the same direction. We have a lot of tables in the, uh, in the elementary schools, especially in the younger grades. Purchasing has worked with those schools to swap out, uh, tables for desks and chairs that, that they had in the warehouse. We didn't have enough to cover all of those. So in the cases where you have two or more students sitting at a table, and they are unable to face the same direction, we've got three thousand dividers that, uh, we can, will, will be distributed, distributed this week, and these dividers can be placed in between those students. This is not a requirement, but we felt like, um, you know, it's, it's, um, a little extra precaution to, for, for those situations where they're not able to face the same direction. So, um, beyond that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Mr. Wilderborg?
I'm, I'm gonna join in and have several questions. One is, you know, I got my bus tie on today, so, um, there's gonna be a lot about buses. But the plan you're telling, you're mentioning would have, say, a kindergartner get on, sit in the last seat, and then later on, a fifth grader who is not related to them, sit next to them. You know, my, it's always been my concern, uh, as a principal and sister principal. A lot of times, that's where, that's kind of saying, hey, let's, bullying situations possibly, a fifth grader, and so that, that could very well happen.
Uh, it, it could, and if those situations occur, it's a, it's an easy, easy accommodation and change to, to reassign seats.
Okay, okay. And at this time, I know one of the big things, we, we need more bus drivers. Do we pay for the bu, the CDL, or do we expect that person?
We do reimburse staff if they, uh, if they obtain their CDL.
Great, great, super, thank you.
Anyone else for Mr. Anderson?
Have we seen, Eddie, um, Mr. Anderson, any, um, um, issues at all with, um, the, the, the significant amount of cleaning that we're doing? Have we seen any, um, you know, reports of, you know, respiratory or skin, you know, irritations and think from the, the chemicals that we're using a lot of? I know we're supposed to wear masks, and we're supposed to have our gloves, but I'm just, you know...
Well, I have not heard, um, there, there've, there've been a couple of, um, couple of, um, situations where staff using, uh, the product, you know, have, they have some other underlying condition that this may, um, you know, cause problems. And in those cases, we've provided, uh, additional, uh, N95 mask or respirators and, you know, work with those staff on, on, uh, accommodating their, their individual needs. There've been very few, I mean, off, off the top of my head, I can only think of two. We've had a couple of schools that, um, when we were using the electrostatic misters, the next morning, um, yes, um, someone complained that there was an, an odor or residue. We've gone out, and in one case, there was an adjustment that needed to be made to the sprayer. In other cases, um, we've quit doing that in that classroom. If a teacher or staff person has a concern, um, then we'll, we'll stop doing that in that space. And, um, I think that then you can, you know, if the, if the condition continues, then we know it's something else. And if it improves, then, you know, great, we, we, you know, we can, uh, we can do that on Fridays and it has the weekend. So we'll, and again, I, I think, um, you know, maybe situations at, at, you know, a couple of schools. Overall, the response has been very positive, and I think our, our teachers and staff and parents appreciate the efforts that, um, you know, staff are making at the schools to make sure our buildings are clean.
No, not with, without a doubt. Now, I just was thinking, more chemical use, more chance for exposure, so...
Sure.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have some questions. It looks like here the biggest sticking points of the three Ws are lunch in the classrooms and the buses. Because, I mean, I know we have all in good intentions for them not to talk during lunch or anything like that, but we really know better, because we know our kids, and we know what they're like. And, you know, I know, I have no doubt that the teachers are gonna do what is required and what they need to do, but I'm hearing different things, that there are, there are a lot of teachers that are worried about these specific situations, and I don't know that they have gotten answers that they need. I mean, obviously, there's no guarantee with the virus, I mean, let's just be, you know, clear, I mean, viruses are gonna do what they're gonna do. And, you know, we're dealing with one right now, where community spread is very, very big. So I guess my question is, like, if you're removing two of the Ws from the lunch in the classrooms, I mean, isn't that going to cause spread? I feel like that is the prime location, as well as buses. Um, and I, I mean, I know, we can do as much cleaning as we can do, but, um, if you're, if, if those three Ws aren't there, I mean, you're just gonna get more spread, and I do worry about that because I know we talked about how spread is not as bad in schools, within the schools, but you are going to see a rise as, as our cases rise. And I would feel very terrible if any kids got sick, or if any staff got sick, and, you know, potentially got really ill from the COVID. So, I mean, I guess you're basically saying that there is not gonna be any six-foot distancing at all in elementary. Is that correct?
I, I wouldn't say that, um, you know, based on the, the numbers. I think that, um, you know, let's, let's just, um, we'll drill down a little bit. You know, currently, um, there are fewer school, there are fewer elementary students in, uh, in our schools than we had last year. Currently, we're only about, uh, you know, a hundred to two hundred over capacity. So these are, you know, big picture. And then when you look down at each, each and every classroom, um, you know, if you have, if you had thirty, thirty students, you know, this is hot, really, thirty students in a, in a, in a class, you know, eighty percent, because we know about on average, eighty percent are returning, that's twenty-four students. We were accommodating, um, in, in the largest classrooms, you know, twenty-four students with six-foot distancing. On average, I would say it's probably, you know, more around, you know, eighteen, nineteen. So, you know, I, I, I wish I could give you a, a very specific answer, uh, but there are so many variables. We're looking for a, a simple answer to a very complex issue. You know, clap, the number of students, the size of the space, the type of furniture, who's in remote, who's in. And, um, what, the only response I could say is to go back to, um, you, our, our teachers and our, and our staff, they know what to do. You know, they, they did a remarkable job in setting up and preparing for Plan B. And, um, you know, we, we have, um, we had a lot of requests to come out and, and help them work through Plan B. We have not had, um, that many requests under Plan E, under Plan A. I, I think that, um, they, they know what to do. You know, there will be situations, um, where we're not social distancing, um, by six feet. I think there will be far fewer situations where we would not be social distancing by less than three feet. But I, I, I do not have the exact numbers in terms of classrooms.
Well, I would say, I have no doubt that they're gonna do the best they can do. I just, I feel like we're getting feedback, I, I've got, we've gotten like three hundred emails over the last couple of weeks, so, I mean... I, I don't know, I, they're not gonna obviously complain. I mean, teachers are, they're troopers, they do, they do everything they can for the kids and for families, but at the same time, it's like, I feel like I'm getting different feedback, so, maybe, maybe there's just a disconnect there.
I would, I would say that, um, you know, not social distancing or a variance in social distancing, you know, doesn't necessarily lead to, um, correlate to, to more cases. It does increase risk, and what we're trying to do is mitigate that risk the best way we can.
Can I ask one follow-up question? And I don't really know if this is more directed to you or Ms. Varnum, but, uh, I've heard from a couple of principals, they have a concern, you know, they spend an hour in the morning checking kids, students in, kids, students in, and now if we're gonna double those numbers, you know, is, is there a plan in place to help support the, the staff in getting students into the school?
Well, first, I wish that those principals had reached out to us. And I'll say that on here because we've given them multiple opportunities to speak freely, and if they're not coming to us, that again is a surprise. So can we help them? They have support staff out there with them, and I'll be honest, principals aren't the only ones who are doing that. There are multiple people out there. So then they need to work with, um, Dr. Jethro, they need to work with, um, Student Services, to create a plan, if they're struggling with that plan and not knowing how to get them through. I drop off at the high school, and I drop off at the middle school, and they, on an AB day, are actually putting through more kids than our elementary kids would come through even on a regular day, and they're doing it in thirty minutes. So I would then have us to look at some of our high schools' principals and say how they're doing it. But I'm not necessarily sure, we need more people, we need to look and see how are we doing it, and that's a question that we can definitely discuss with them on tomorrow, and I'll be more than happy to have that conversation, because I need them to talk to me.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Anderson. I'm sorry, Ms. Justice, you have another question?
Okay, so, now you said that, as far as you could tell at this point, the average class size, saying between twenty and, uh, twenty-five and thirty, that you see six feet in a lot of cases, three feet in a lot of cases, but you don't deny that there's also a lot of cases where it's gonna be less than three feet in the classroom?
Well, let's, let's clarify that, um, I, I didn't say thirty was an average, I just used that as an example. I think earlier, uh, Dr. Smith shared that she thought, you know, twenty to twenty-four.
Yeah.
But, you know, don't, don't use thirty as an average. That was not my intent, I, I just, I was just using a number. And I didn't say a lot that, that were going to, um, to be, um, three foot or less.
No, you didn't.
I think what I said was there would be far fewer, uh, where it would be three foot, feet or less.
But, but there would be...
But there will be, there will be some.
There will be ones that are.
There will be some, and, and I, I don't, um, I don't know how many or where they are.
Okay, and, and you're talking about K through five, when they come in the classroom for lunch, and I'm going to lunch now, okay? They bring the class into lunch, they take their masks off. Uh, according to the CDC, they're supposed to have no more than fifteen minutes without the mask, is that correct? In order to eat, uh, other, otherwise the risk rises, that's what I'm talking about, the risk rising.
Well, I know that fifteen minutes, um, you know, with or without, out of mask, has, uh, has been used a lot in the CDC guidelines.
Correct, and, and so you've got, and kindergarten, those of us who've had children, which I think everybody up here has, and most of us have actually been in classrooms, understand that there's a huge difference between kindergarten, kindergarten children and fifth-grade students as far as the ability to have them face forward, if that's half and half, they eat because of size and distance, not interact with kids that are, say, two feet away from them. That's correct, right?
Um, well, I, I think that, um, you know, one of the benefits of eating in the classroom is that students will be better behaved, and that the teacher has better control of the class. I think, um, you know, when you, when you get up and go to the cafeteria, students are more used to a relaxed environment and would, would have the tendency to, to do the things that you're talking about. So, you know, one of the reasons that, um, it, I think that eating in a classroom was a, is a better decision is because, um, it is a controlled environment. I think students will be better behaved, teachers have, uh, more control, as well as, you know, the other thing that we're trying to, uh, to mitigate is, um, we're trying to maintain pods, classroom pods, and, and minimize the interaction between groups of kids in different classrooms. And so, you know, that, if you were going to the cafeteria, we would most definitely have multiple classes in that cafeteria at the same time. So that, that, that's a different, uh, risk and exposure.
And that's actually not my concern. My concern is the kids in the classroom, that's gonna be in the classroom for extended periods of time, all day long. We're talking about children. I've been in a classroom way too many times, and you're talking about, you know, five days a week doing this. Expect, you said even sil, even brought up silent lunch, which, to me, you can do that maybe one or two days, having gone through that as a teacher, but you're talking about every day in order to mitigate the, uh, opportunity for spread. So I'm just pointing out that that's something that is almost, difficult to say could happen in a successful way. How's that sound?
Well, what I believe that Ms. Anderson was doing is giving examples.
Right.
He, nor I, nor know what... Those individuals who are reaching and saying, we don't know how this is gonna work, when they give an example, it feels like everything is just being shot down. So all those are, are examples in trying to help people problem-solve. It's not necessarily, so do we know that, hey, you may have kids, and I was a fourth-grade teacher, I do know that when you put them in the classroom for lunch, it does change the atmosphere. They aren't as fidgety when they're in there. But when he was saying that there could do, possible of having silent lunch, that's because if we needed students to not, um, talk with their mask on or off, that was one of those mitigating factors that we were saying. We'd even thought about, hey, well, what if they eat with their shield on, uh, their, um, face shield on? Those are just things that they are spitting out. The teachers, of course, would know, could they spread out in the classroom? Sure, there are multiple areas in that classroom, but if we were wanting to trace that, we... All he is doing is giving examples.
Right.
And so what I have to do for my staff is make sure that we're not shooting down the messenger.
I, I'm not shooting, Eddie's great, he knows how I feel, we've worked together.
I think so much of this, too, is speculation, because we haven't been here yet.
Right, and, and the thing, and the thing is, you know, you, you've got people that work with kids all the time, and then you've got the reality of what we gotta do to keep them safe. And I'm just pointing out the two, how they're gonna end up mixing in just in the real world. Now, back to the buses, um, you said that, are, are there very many buses with more than forty-eight students?
Very few.
But there are some.
There will be some.
Okay, and also forty-eight students, that's still two students per seat, correct? Correct, okay. And that, you know, that is a concern, we all have those concerns. Now, you said that, uh, you were telling us about the, and I'm glad we're getting the, this bus drivers, uh, trained, they're hopefully taking a test, how many drivers are we down, out of cur, curiosity? Not curiosity, consideration, how, how many bus drivers are we down right now?
I, I would have to look at that, and it's, um, you know, we're still able to maintain a driver pool. So because we have a pool, I would say we're, we're not any positions down. We're able to cover each and every route every day. But that pool isn't as large as, as we would like. I would say anywhere from, you know, if we could, ideally, if we, uh, could get six to eight drivers on board before the start of the next school year, that would be great.
Okay, so that's before the start of this next school year. We're about to embark on, and we're gonna be com, combining Plan A along with what we're doing with Plan B for middle and high school. So there, there is gonna be a lot of change as far as, uh, maybe needing more drivers, possibly. Would you say that's...
We've got, we've got, we've got next week covered.
Next week covered.
We, we don't have any, staffing is not an issue, uh, for transitioning to Plan A.
Okay, so thank you.
I have one last question about buses, just one more.
All right, let's have Ms. Walker, and then we will move on to Ms. Varnum.
So, uh, I know you were talking about, are there, did you say there were monitors on the bus, too, or there were people? I know, especially with these new bus drivers, I, I don't know how many veterans are left, but like, they have to drive the bus.
I know, especially with these new bus drivers, I don't know how many veterans are left, but like, they have to drive the bus. So how are they gonna ever be able to deal with what's happening behind them, especially when it comes to keeping their masks on, things like that? I don't know if you had thought about that or whether you could answer that.
They, and, and our bus drivers deal with that now. You know, when, when that's observed, they will certainly remind students to, you know, put, put their mask on. Whenever it's a, the problem continues, then we, we do a referral to the school. And, you know, the school staff can help with that situation.
Yeah, it's gonna be tough, I guess. Anybody that can hear my voice is no, is no surprise that I was, I was worried about going to Plan A last month. And it's only because I really just, really don't want people to get sick. That's, I mean, that's. So, you know, all these questions I have are obviously legitimate questions, and there's some that we just can't answer right now because we haven't been tested, so.
Mr. Wildebohr, do you have a final question for Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, final question. Just, just, I am correct that all the buses have cameras on them, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, yeah, that's, I just wanna answer.
All right, thank you very much for sharing the information. Ms. Brinson, not Ms. Varnum.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
There was a question for you, Ms. Brinson.
Yes, I have a question for you, Ms. Brinson. So the, I had heard early on that we were gonna have, that when we come back to Plan A, the plan was to bring all of our devices with us as students, and that they were gonna have to be collected and then scrubbed to be able to be used in class. Am, am I hearing it wrong? Am I, am I regurgitating it back to you wrong?
Initially, that is what we thought, but that is not what we communicated back before the holidays. I sent an email to principals to let them know we will not be collecting the devices from students. And that students are to leave the devices at home and only bring them when there's specific instructional or assessment needs. So it'll be on a case-by-case scenario, and teachers will ask the kids to bring their devices. We did, we had some iPads, so we did deliver thirty iPads to each school, elementary school. So they had some additional ones on the school site that they could use. We did, in the email, also ask principals to, remind principals that, you know, this, this device was checked out to the student. It can't be a shared device because of COVID. It, they'll have to stay with that student and use it just like their notebooks or pen or pencil that they're doing. And we've asked them to kind of create labels or have kids put labels on them. So in the case that something gets mixed up, they know exactly who that device belongs to.
Okay. And then could you just clarify for me on the status of cameras on our devices?
Yes, so the iPads.
And use of cameras?
Yes, iPads do have cameras on them. Our student laptops do not. Those are laptops we've ordered in previous years. We are waiting on two orders now or three orders that we have from the distributor to, to get in. We've told that they were, they keep telling the change in the date for us and pushing it back, but they're supposed to be here by the end of the month. Those, however, do have cameras on them, and we get them in, we will get those distributed out. Students are not expected to turn cameras on during Zoom. It is their choice. We do ask so that they don't turn their camera on, that they do put their name in, so the teacher then knows, you know, who that student is and they see that screen with their name. But it is, it is the student's choice to turn their camera on. Thank you.
You're welcome.
She's already presented.
Oh, okay, so any other questions regarding technology for Ms. Brinson from the group? All right, thank you very much. And Ms. Varnum, have we heard all from you? Okay. Anyone else?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Justice.
All right, I would like to make a motion that we stay in Plan B until either teachers of the, our staff, not just teachers, our whole staff, or at least a, a safe number, say eighty percent, have the opportunity to have, be vaccinated, or our numbers drop below five percent. Because we are up to fourteen point seven, and I know that this is a big concern as far here in the county.
All right, there is a motion at the table. Is there a second?
I have to second that because I voted, didn't vote to go into Plan A last time, so I feel the same way.
All right, so there is a motion to. Sure, could you, could you repeat, repeat the motion, please, Ms. Justice?
I'm talking to you. I should be talking into this. I'm, I'm motioning that we return to Plan B and remain in Plan B until our staff is, I'd say eighty percent of our staff is vaccinated or our numbers below, drop below five percent.
Let me have a second. All right, is there discussion?
What is the procedure for asking another board member to modify that motion?
After, as we have discussion, that can be, and I believe we have Ms. Stagner on the line. But if there is a modification that you would like to make, I think you would just have to ask for it, and then we would vote on the modification to the motion.
And then the.
And then have a discussion. Is that correct, Ms. Stagner?
Yes, if there's a motion to amend, once there's been a second, then the motion to amend would be voted on, and then the original motion as amended would be voted on.
All right, what would you like to?
I, I wanted you, Judy, to think about, I would rather not give the eighty percent because we, we have no idea how long that's going to be. So I would like it to be something more substantial, you know, something more definitive, so that we, we shouldn't have to change or we won't have to change again.
I agree.
So I was looking at, thinking more in my mind on the half of the nine weeks, like the, the four point, or after first assessment dates or at the end, you know, some definitive change. And so if you would change that, but the, and I guess, do you have the dates of, I didn't bring my calendar. The, the school, the fourth week, the, the assessment time, isn't that like March the fifth?
It's only two weeks away.
March, March eighth, I believe, March eighth or ninth, I believe, is the final nine weeks of school.
Okay, the final, or she was talking, okay, clarify that. Were you talking about the assessment for the half of the nine weeks?
When is four and a half weeks? When, when is the interim report, Carl?
Dr. Smith, can you share with us what the?
Fifth of February on the traditional.
Fifth of February is the midterm, is the interim report date.
So we, we, do you have seven different calendars?
Yes, just from the.
Yes, thank you.
Traditional. Let's start there.
Traditional and restart, I guess.
So the interim for our traditional calendar, the interim reports are February fifth. And then for our restart calendar. Those interims are February third, and then, of course.
Year round.
Year round?
We should put them in, too.
Year round is the same as, which one? February fifth? Okay, and then we do have our early colleges. I don't know if we're, well, actually, no, so I'm sorry, because we're just talking elementary. Yeah, we're just elementary, I apologize. Oh, yeah, that's really. And then we would, of course, have our pre-K centers to follow this schedule as well.
Before we amend the motion, can we, can we start with some discussion? I'd like to go, I'd like to hear from every board member to hear your thoughts.
Sorry, I retract that.
Can, let's, let's start down here with Mr. Wildebohr. The motion that has originally, has been presented is staying in B with, until eighty percent of teachers are vaccinated or the county has hit five percent. Is that correct?
I don't know. I actually like to have a discussion on modifying that first.
But for now, for that motion, that's where we're at. Let's have, let's, let's just have a discussion.
Well, it's not the final, I would like to discuss the final motion once we reach it.
Yes, we will, but this is just the discussion on, on where we are right now. So, Mr. Wildebohr, thoughts?
Thank you. My thoughts on that is, you know, as a few of my colleagues have mentioned, I ran on safety, and I think safety is paramount. We did have a person out here a minute ago that had a sign that talked about all the concerns. It's obviously, you know, the pandemic is a huge concern, but also the mental and emotional state of our students is also a huge concern. So I think this is a, a good way to go forth with having face-to-face, but maybe limiting it. We've been successful in B. It, it sounds to me like it, it's a, a good middle of the ground. And looking at reopening at a hundred percent, you know, as early as, as, you know, we just mentioned, the third or the fifth of February. So we're not talking too far down the road. Once, but it, it does make sense to me that we, you know, we've, we've said to everyone, we're gonna get our staff vaccinated if they choose to be. And then if we run back to A before that, it's, well, we're gonna get you vaccinated down the road, but today, we're, you know, you're gonna have all the students in your classroom, so. And I, I just, I'm gonna throw out that my, and I'm gonna continue to throw this out. I mean, I think we need to look at every aspect and every way we can keep students safe. I still don't think we have a safe answer for, especially on the buses. And I, I really would like to have the whole board at some point, very soon, talk about the germicidal idea. I mean, when we're looking at ninety-nine percent safety, but we're not doing anything about it. So, I mean, I would like to look, you know, maybe in our February meeting discussing that and saying, well, let's go, at least go forth with a proposal as far as financial, you know, putting out the, the bids. Because, I mean, that's one thing. If we're gonna put students right on top of each other on the bus, which is what there's a good chance of, even two to a seat, you know, two fifth graders in the seat could possibly be right on top of each other. And if we're doing that and hoping that the kids, the students keep their masks on and hope that, you know, I mean, there's a lot of hope there. So let's, let's go ahead and do everything we can possibly, even if it costs a good chunk of money to keep our students safe, so. That's my overall feelings on that.
Ms. Walker.
Well, speaking to the vaccine part of it, I know Ms. Crable and I did really work hard to try and get the teachers bumped up. We did manage to do that along with the state because they recognize that teachers are very, very vital to the system. They are essential workers. We all feel schools are essential. Of course they are. And, you know, that last week, we heard from the health department that that's not gonna happen as quick as we'd like for that to happen. Probably may not happen for five to six weeks. Well, we can't necessarily say we gotta wait just for that because, you know, but it, but that it is something we have to keep in mind because it's not gonna happen as fast as we want it to happen. And of course, any way we can do to break this COVID cycle, I think everybody, we're at a period right now where it's the highest for us. That's one point. The second thing is, I feel like help is on the way. I feel like the administration has made it one of their priorities to reopen schools, which I'm hoping means they're gonna pump money and vaccines and distribution out there quicker so we can all break the cycle of COVID. My daughter goes to UNC, they've delayed for three more weeks remote undergraduate, and they're expecting their students to be tested weekly now, coming up in the semester. And they're able to do that, so they're gonna be able to break that cycle, but we don't have, we don't have the resources for that, unfortunately. So I agree that, like, just at least, you know, what we know Plan B has been at least work. We can, we can control it as much as we can, which obviously we can't control it because it's a virus, but as much as we can possibly do. And I, I do agree with, you know, at least doing as, as much as we can. I know we all want to be in A. Like, I know teachers want that. I know parents want that. And I very much feel for the mental health aspect of it, you know. You know, as a child, I had a lot of problems like that, too, and I, we just have to think about children. And I, believe me, I, if I can speak for everyone here, we all think about all of you guys. Like, we all are worried about everything. But we have to make a decision. The weight has been put on us to do that, unfortunately, so, you know, our government won't do it, so we have to do it. So what we're gonna do is just make sure we are being as thoughtful as possible. So I'm done. Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
All right, Mr. Bullier.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to thank my fellow board members. I know this is a difficult discussion and a difficult decision. Four hundred and seventy-eight quarantines resulting in six positive cases. Those are four hundred and seventy-eight close contacts, contacts that we would have in Plan A. And point eight percent of our students and two percent of our staff, two hundred and seventy-one positives. We don't know where those are coming from. Those are in the broader community. And I sat up here with everybody else months ago, and I talked about five percent, and I believed that then. And I did not realize how devastating our students were, how devastating all this was for our K-five students. I didn't realize that. I didn't put that into the proper context, and I, I will certainly own that. But we've talked here a lot about keeping everybody safe, keeping staff safe. We haven't talked about what happens if we go away from this. Because our students, you know, for me, I, I love going out for a beer with my wife, and I'm annoyed after two weeks when I can't do that. And I'm frustrated after six months, you know, when I can't gather with friends. These kids, for school, for so many of them, it's their whole lives, and they've been asked to pause for a year. And our administration understands the realities of the pandemic raging around the county, and they still come to us and they say, I believe that we can do it safely, and I believe the risks, the very real, serious risks in not doing this far outweigh the risks of doing it. Nobody should sit here and tell you that it is a hundred percent safe because it is not. It is absolutely not. But there are guarantees to delaying even longer. And I cannot shut my conscience to those students. I, I know everybody's trying their best. I believe that our kids need to be back in school. I know how bad the pandemic is. I know it makes sense, makes absolutely no sense, but the governor has made schools an exception because schools are an exception because the damage that we are doing by not having these kids in school is crippling. And, you know, I, I support whatever the board decides, obviously, but I just, that's my piece, and I urge the board to consider that.
Thank you, Mr. Bullier. We'll go down to Ms. Justice for comments on this discussion.
Well.
You can go. Go ahead.
Oh, okay, sure. By the way, the governor has said the reason that he's leaving it up to the districts is because every district varies. There's a hundred districts across the state. You've got some small districts over in the mountains, for example. They don't have any cases practically all. They're, they're probably positivity rates three or four, three or four percent. So, you know, it's, it's not that he, that schools are different. It's, it's just because the schools, districts are different and their makeup is different. That's why he left it to us. This is our responsibility, and it's a huge responsibility. The end is in sight, thank goodness. We can't, I mean, to me, to give up now, especially when there was two hundred and nine cases the day before yesterday, a hundred and fifty-seven yesterday. We topped a hundred dead in, in our hospital from New Hanover County yesterday. It's not getting better. I probably, of all the people up here, have had the opportunity, sad opportunity, to experience everything we're talking about. I have close relatives that died horrible deaths. I have two children in my house that, this is why, so I'm saying we should go to B. Because the two days in school has been so invaluable to them because they do need that socializing. And yet we need that safety. We need that distance. And, and here's the third way I can relate. I'm a high-at-risk person. My grandkids live with me. If they go back to school full-time, I'm gonna have to really rethink about the, the way I live my life. I can protect myself now, but should I have to, I might have to yank them out of school just out of fear for my safety with these cases increasing. And I don't want to have to do that. I think with B, it's manageable. It, it provides both the socialization and the safety that we desperately need in this really rough time. And we've got probably a couple of months, unfortunately, this year is gonna be rough, but it's going on all across the nation. Nobody's being deprived individually in any school. It's everywhere. So this is the reason I feel that we should be going back into B, and I think it'd be the best thing for our community and our, definitely our children and our staff.
All right, Mr. McManus.
It's probably toughest decision I've, I've had to think about, absolutely. Y'all have done an unbelievable job, truly. I don't think you've left a stone unturned. If we're gonna err, safety has to be a, a, a major variable. It's a no winner. It's absolutely a no winner. We're gonna, whatever we decide, the community's so split apart, and I understand that. It was a no winner. I'm trying to listen. I really can't add a whole lot to what's been said, except it's just an absolutely very difficult decision. Absolutely.
Ms. Crable?
Yeah, the, to, to start off with, I also believe that our kids should be in school. I wanted them in, in school a long time ago, especially our little kids, you know, the, the pre-K through two, because just, they don't even know what school is, you know. So it's, it's kind of hard to educate, you know, in, in the, in the system that they don't even know what it is. But, and I have to thank, you know, the central office staff a lot, you know, because, you know, I'm, I'm, I like to look at the risk and, and see what I can personally manage myself, like where are we in the moderate, elevated, and high? And, and I'm, I'm listening carefully to the ABC Collaborative, and I'm just having a hard time extrapolating their data to where we're going. And that's why I'm in favor of B because I want our kids back in school. I want some parents and families to have the choice to be, have their kids in class as, if they can. And kids who are failing, you know, we can work and see if we can get them a little extra time, just like our, our E C and our E L L students. So, that's why I, I don't wanna do it very long, but as I'm looking at it, you know, our numbers are going up, but they will soon start to come down. And our vaccine rate will go up. And I'm just looking at the crosshair, you know, where are we gonna get to where we need to be? And I'm just feeling like that's coming soon. And our teachers and our staff and, um, our central office staff, you know, our, our school-based staffs, they know what to do in B. And, um, from what I'm hearing and, and, and just supposing it has to happen, is the so many things that we have learned in A um, can be put into and overlaid on B plans. You know, that the B we go back to may not have to be the same B. It may be able to be B two-point-oh, you know, I, I don't know with that. And, and I can't begin to even, you know, suggest, you know, how best to do that. I mean, I can look at a situation just like any of us or any principal or teacher can. But I, I do value what they think, you know, is appropriate for their school buildings. And I know that they're doing, you know, everything they can. And if we were to say today that we're staying in A, then everybody would do it. I mean, and they, um, I would have the, I'm just feeling like, you know, if, if something goes wrong, I'm, I'm feeling a little agita about having to take on that, that brunt with me personally, you know, that, you know, how, how would I do that? So, and for those of you who, who, who say to, say to me anyway, and, and to all of us as a group, that we can't make up our mind, that we, we oscillate back and forth. And to those people, I want to just say, and I've told them this personally, is that we also have had two superintendents. Um, I haven't had the chance to have three, um, but we've had two superintendents, um, one interim, one brand-new. Thank you for showing up, you know, and, and coming. Um, we've had two new board, we've had a new board. You know, so sometimes I feel personally attacked and I didn't even get a chance to do anything to get attacked for yet. But I'm part of the board, so I'm, I'm taking that in because that's my job. So, that's where I am, is that I, I don't discount that, that we have tried and we've got good plans in place. And I know some parents have already started to make some preliminary plans. And I know some parents haven't because they haven't heard from their school yet, because the school was waiting on us again. So, I, I, I wanna apologize for that because I know it's upsetting. And I'm a planner and, yeah, I got my calendar, I got my fifteen pieces of paper back here and sticky notes all over my computer. So, I, I'm a planner and I'm just trying to take it all in. So, I, I, in, in my mind, think that B until February the fifth, which is the end of the nine weeks, it's three weeks out. It gives us, it gives us time to.
The end of the nine weeks.
Middle. I'm sorry, the middle of the nine weeks, the, the middle of the nine weeks, the, the interim place. And teachers can get, you know, see what's going on with their kids and then we can, we can move forward into A for the whole rest of the year and then like just finish as strong as we can. I know it's, it's a cliche to say, let's finish strong, but finish, finish the best that we can with what we have and with all the plans that are in place. We can move from B to A from Friday to Monday, you know, or maybe like, you know, Thursday, Wednesday, close. So, we have plans in place for A, so we are ready to move to A, um, whenever we say.
No.
Isn't that not true?
That's not.
I thought that that's.
The reason why is that it's gonna take us a while about, we can have two weeks to put the kids back in to B because of the transportation management system that we use, um, power school. And then if you go back, it's gonna take us another two, so it's almost, we're looking at a month of just switching. So, it's not a just press stop and we can do it. And either way, you know, it's the board's decision, but on the doer side, behind what's going on behind the scenes, we can't stop on a dime. So, we need to have some time. So, for instance, if the board is going with this, we're gonna need at least a week and a half to undo what we've already done before we can put the elementary kids in school. So, they're gonna have to stay in Plan C until we can get the transportation routes, um, and the classes set back up too. Because it, you, once you change it, it's, you change it. And then if you wanna go back, if you're looking at the fifth, which would then be that first Friday, then we would have to then plan, stop and plan, so it's not as easy as it said. We just need a definitive answer and we will do what the board says.
I would like, I'd like to share my comments, please. Um, thank you for sharing that. Back in December, when we made the decision to vote for A, everybody up here said it, um, we all want our kids back in school. And over the past month, I have spoken to parent groups, some of which are in here. I have spoken to teacher groups, some of which are in here. Uh, we have gotten countless, countless amounts of emails over the course of the last couple of weeks. Um, since January tenth, we have received, me personally, I've received over three hundred and fifty emails. I apologize that I've not been able to respond to you yet, but I'm making sure that every single one of them is being read. I was notating Plan A versus not Plan A from our community members. And the no to Plan A came screaming out. Now, what's interesting is that doesn't match up with the parents that have selected to come back. When you look at our percentage of eighty-three percent of our parents want to come back into schools, it almost, it, it doesn't seem to make sense with what type of feedback we have been receiving because it doesn't align. That being said, I want to first thank the administration and the school-based staff that have been working since the decision was made in December. I know that this has been an immense, immense weight to carry, to figure out. But I also wanna explain where I'm at today. And this is probably, this is one of the hardest decisions I've ever had to make in my life, personal or professional. Back when we made this decision, we were in yellow. We were under ten percent, uh, as a positivity rate, as a county. And we believed, our superintendent believed, at, because he knows his staff and he knows our schools and he knows how diligently everyone would work to make this happen. He said, we can do this. The information has changed in four weeks. We went from yellow to orange to red. Dr. Cohen made a statement last week in one of the state press conferences and she said, if you traveled, assume you have COVID. Here's what I wanted in the month between vote to A to today. I wanted to trust that our community was going to help stop the spread and that has not happened. I want our kids in school. I asked my son today before I left, buddy, what do you wanna do on Tuesday? I wanna go to school. Of course he does. He wants to be there. I want him there. When you look at the numbers and even, even Dr. Akonboyo said it today, transmissions are rare when following mitigation measures. That's the toolkit and that's the three Ws. What I have seen today, what I have heard today, we cannot do that in A. And I know this is going to anger people. I understand how badly we all want our kids back in school. But if I have to look at mental health and academics in comparison to health, public health, I'm going to have to default to public health. And I know that is going to make people angry and I know that it makes you feel that the work that you've been doing for four weeks is, is in vain. And it's not because I want us to get to A. I wanna see, I, I don't necessarily agree with Ms. Ms. Justice's, um, five percent. I would like to see a decline in positivity rate. I would like to see more vaccinations. And, and even that, I'm, I'm hesitant with the February fifth date. And the only reason I say that is because the vaccines are not within the control of, of the county. That's coming from the federal government right now. And so, based on how many we're putting out is how many we are able to do. So, I don't know if I can say confidently, our teachers are going to be vaccinated within the next three weeks. But I want teachers to have the option to get their vaccinations before going into full A. Have the option. I know that you have a choice. Um, but I wanna see our kids in school too. But as of today, I could, I cannot support a transition to A on Tuesday. So, that being said, comments?
Well, uh, I guess a modification is what.
I would like to change my modification to your, your, the, um, I really want to be in B, but given what Dr. Faustus told us and some of the eyeballs out over there, um, I am saying, I would like to amend that we stay in Plan C until February fifth.
Oh.
Move to Plan B and then finish out the year.
In Plan B?
In Plan, oh, no, finish out the, I mean, move to Plan A and then finish out the year because I think we can get there.
We don't, February the fifth is the date for the cut, the, the half, the half of the, the nine weeks, right? There's, the, the, we can compromise on that even. Why don't we go through the, why don't we go ahead and shift to B? They now know how to go to A when they will have to go to A. And then finish this nine weeks in B so that the kids do need to be in school. I would like to see them in school in a week and a half. That's what he said it would take. And then that would give them at least a month in B. And then from there, maybe, just maybe, we will have that intersection that Ms. Adams was talking about, where you've got the vaccines and the numbers going down. But that would give us enough time to satisfy the needs of all the stakeholders that I'm seeing here. Cause, yeah.
I'm sorry. Dr. Faust, are you saying the twenty, it's doable to start B on the twenty-fifth of January?
Tight.
That would be tight.
But he did say we could, possibly, most likely.
Yeah, it would.
Differ to you guys because if we're gonna do it, tell us when's the best and then I'll amend my motion again.
I would have to have, um, Eddie's team and Julie's team and, um, we would have to.
Can, can you guys pow-wow while we're in clo, no, you have to be in closed session. Can they pow-wow and then we can come back and look at it? I mean, just, I mean, just to spitball it, you know, sticky notes on the parking lot and just see what makes the most sense? Because I really wanna support getting our kids in. I wanna support you guys too, but I'm just, my, my gut is churning.
And see, the, the problem for us is, um, we only have technically two more days in this week.
Right, right.
And then it's four days next week because.
Okay.
Yeah, and so, we are short on, I mean, it took us almost three weeks to do it. So, we have to undo what we did. So, that's why the, the fifth is where we are.
I don't wanna change again. I mean, I would like to get us to where we think we need to be, um, quickly, you know, and, and smoothly.
So, Eddie, looking at Tim's, do you think we can do it before the fifth?
Need a calendar?
I've been looking at it, yeah. I, I've obviously been, you know, texting and talking to Mark as well. Um, you know, we, um, we obviously, we didn't hit the delete button on Plan B. But the process of, of creating, um, bus routes for Plan A starts at the school. They go into power school and, um, they change all the designations from, you know, one, two, three or four, which is A, A, B, B. They change that and that generates a route request. So, we, you know, we could, we could run our Plan B routes, but there've been a lot of changes with, you know, who's coming back? Who's gonna be, because I'm assuming that you, the, the decision, um, you know, to, to stay remote or be fully remote or be face-to-face, um, you know, that's still a decision parents would, would have to make. And, um, you know, we, so, there, there are a lot of changes that, that could be made, um, if the decision was to stay in Plan B. And I wouldn't be confident in next Tuesday that we would, we would run routes where we would pick up each and every child. Um, I'm, I'm comfortable with the twenty-fifth. I think that, um, you know, a week and a half gives schools an opportunity to, uh, make the changes they need in power school. And then we can, um, make sure that we've got, uh, each and every child that's requesting transportation cover. Now, I don't know, you know, that's purely from a child, um, transportation perspective. My colleagues may have some other ideas or, or need another different date.
So, possible, so February twenty-fifth, moving to a Plan B.
January.
I'm sorry, January twenty-fifth, moving to a Plan B and then March eighth, I believe, is the next quarter?
But we were talking, I was talking about going beyond the quarter to the end of the nine weeks. That'll give the kids.
That's what March eighth is.
That's what March eighth, March eighth is the, the start of the fourth quarter.
Um, the dates are starting to get a little muddy in my brain. Yeah, March eighth is, that's what I'm referring to.
Yes, Dr. Smith. For the year round, so March fifth is the, is the quarter, with the goal of fourth quarter of full Plan A.
And, and, and that's what I would like to modify my motion for then.
Okay.
Okay? Going back to school on the twenty-fifth, hopefully it looks like they can. Uh, and then, uh, and, and of course, we'll have to explore it once we get there. But things are going, once, once we get over the next month or so, according to the, I'm watching the science. Things should start to improve.
That, that is not what I'm hearing from our health experts.
Pardon?
That is not what I'm hearing from our health experts. I just wanted you to know that, I don't, I don't know what you're basing that off of.
I'm not sure. I can't, for some reason, I can't hear you now.
Yeah, I don't know what you're basing that off of, but I just want you to know that that is not what I'm hearing from our, our health experts.
Can you expand on that, please, Mr. Bullier?
Sure, I'm not hearing that, you know, they're optimistic, they're hopeful, we will have vaccines sooner rather than later. But they are not, uh, feeling as optimistic as they once were. And they believe, the ones I have spoken with, believe that we're looking at a, a, a peak, an ultimate peak sometime around the second week, beginning of the second week of February with a slower decline moving forward, so.
And, but, I mean, these are the realities we have to live with. Right now, we have to try.
No, I, I just wanna, I just wanna be clear, there's no.
Okay. Well, I, I, I'm hopeful too. That's my thing and we're, we all are hopeful here. We want, I mean, we gotta be realistic, but we do want hope out there.
So, Ms. Stagner, if Ms. Justice would like to amend her original motion, can you please?
The original motion that I had written down was that they would, the district would stay in Plan B until eighty percent of staff and teachers have the opportunity to be vaccinated or until the numbers go below five percent. And what I've heard from the discussion is that, that, that the district is not in, currently in Plan B and cannot get into Plan B, um, immediately. So, I mean, one option would be to, um, to withdraw the mo. Ms. Justice can request to withdraw the motion. If there's no objection, it can be withdrawn and a new motion could be made. Or there could be a, a motion to amend this existing motion, which, um, is also a possibility.
I, I had actually said that we would return to Plan B. I didn't say we were in Plan B. Does that make sense? Did that help it?
She said that, yeah. Go to Plan B.
Well, I guess it's just terms.
So, um, Ms. Justice, would you like to withdraw the, just original motion?
And make a new one.
Okay, I'll, I'll withdraw the original motion.
Okay, is there any, is there any?
To make it easier, we don't have to vote extra times.
Does anyone have an issue with that?
No, just.
Okay.
Okay, and I would, I would like to make a motion that we return to Plan B with, by, it sounds like the twenty-fifth, as soon as possible. And remain in Plan B until, I believe it's March the fifth, March the fifth, uh, at which time then, of course, we will be revisiting it, but stay in Plan B until then.
So, could we, can we say, um, begin Plan B February twenty-fifth?
January.
Why am I having?
I know feeling.
Begin Plan B January twenty-fifth and at the end, and at the end of the interim transition, no, I'm sorry.
The end of the quarter. Is it quarter?
At the end of the quarter transition. Because the dates, I'm saying we've gotta stay away from the dates because they're different with the calendars. How can we, you know, at the end of the nine weeks, transition.
End of the grading period, right.
End of the grading period, transition to Plan A.
Madam Chair?
That, that's good.
Yes, sir.
May I make a suggestion? Um, and, and I know you've guys have gotten the same feedback. I would caution, uh, this board from further setting a timeline on any return to Plan A because people will make plans based off of the fourth quarter. And then they're gonna have to do work based off of the fourth quarter. If we'd like to meet bi-weekly to discuss where we are and what we wanna do, I would recommend that. But I wouldn't say to the public, uh, right now, I don't think we're in any position when we're pushing back to say, oh, well, we know that on March fifth, we'll be ready to go to Plan A. So, I would strongly urge the board to consider not doing that and just make a motion to go into Plan B on the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Okay.
That's a good one.
Um, that's, that's fine with me. Uh, but, you know, with the understanding that people do need to make plans and, I mean, it's, it's practical to at least give them the opportunity through this end of grading period.
Make the motion so we can even discuss that.
All right, so the motion, the motion on the table now is to begin Plan B on, so, do, I guess, do we need to also include in the motion, extend Plan C, extend remote learning through and the next two weeks and beginning Plan B on February twenty, January twenty-fifth? All right?
That's my...
So that is the motion to extend, extend remote learning and beginning Plan B on January 23rd. Is that right, the 23rd or 25th? I'm sorry.
25th is the Monday.
All right, and Ms. Walker will second that? All right, any other additional discussion?
I just had one question. Dr. Faust, is, before we start voting, is, I mean, I know you don't want it and I know that you're not crazy about this, but if we're gonna go forward with it, then is there anything else you'd like to add? Other than you're gonna like smack me with your backhand?
Nope, no surprises.
Okay.
That's all I ask, that the board not surprise me. That's it. That's all I have to say.
And my only point, again, just, I know how much work this has been. And COVID is unpredictable and it has made it extremely hard to make decisions. And I don't want us to be a indecisive board. But COVID has made it extremely complicated and complex. All right, any other discussion?
One more comment? I obviously voted no the last time, but only because, and I stated at the time, I do want kids back in school, but I want it done safely. And so my, that's what I've been looking for. And I know it's gonna probably, I don't know what's the word, is that a previous board member had brought up that we should be planning for A and we never, we never had the opportunity to do that. And we needed more time for that. And obviously, you have to look at numbers as well. You know, a previous board member said that, you know, should this, this topic come up, we should be ready for it. And we just, we hadn't at that point been ready for it. And all I was asking for is that we had some more plans in place before we made such a big decision. So I'm hoping whatever we choose, that we're gonna do it just like we've just done today. We're gonna come together, we're gonna look at the facts, we're gonna look at the numbers, and we're gonna, we're gonna do what's best, we feel is best for as many people, everyone as possible. And I know it's frustrating for you, Dr. Faust. At the same time, I just like, a lot of districts are dealing with this. I took the time yesterday to look at a lot of what the districts in our state are doing. And I would say a lot of them are doing the hybrid model because that is the way that it can be done as safe as possible. And in the districts that aren't, we got some around as close that are having some issues. And then we got some perhaps that aren't. But, you know, we are, we have to look at what we can do. So that's my last point. Thank you, Ms. Adams.
All right, Ms. Bowie, could you call the vote, please?
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Bullier?
No.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Craybill?
Aye.
Mr. McManus?
Aye.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
And Mr. Wildabour?
Aye.
Motion passes six to one. Thank you very much. All right, next item on the agenda is policies for second reading. Mr. Bullier?
Okay, I hope all the board members have had an opportunity to look at these. I know on our next item for new business, we will be discussing our agenda, thank God. So I will go through, I know some board members have some questions. Are there any questions about policy 3220 technology in the educational program?
Yes, Mr. Bullier, in, in the lead-in session, section where we're talking, can, is, can we add substitute teachers in that last category where it says a superintendent shall integrate a digital plan? The, I just feel like sometimes that we forget about that they're there.
Ms. Stagner, are we allowed to modify policy 3220 when it's on for second reading? Or do we have to remove it and bring it back?
If there's a majority of the board that wants to make that change before, before it's adopted and it's not a significant substantive change, then I think that would be permissible.
Mr. Bullier? I had a question about this policy too, this unrelated to Ms. Craybill's question, within this policy.
I just, are you making a motion?
No, I have another one. So Ms. Brinson, in here, where it's talking about personal tech, in section C, bring your own personal cases. Again, I'm looking there at visitors, PTAs, booster clubs. Are they able to get online? I know in past, but I haven't been active, active in a school. So are visitors allowed to access, to conduct business of their organizations at school? Yes. And that they're, that they're allowed to do? Okay. That, yeah, that was, that was one of my main ones, just to make sure that we included substitutes wherever we're talking about employees. And some people think that that's included, but I just think sometimes it's, it's maybe implied by you because you've, you've done it so much, but I think that they get left out.
So are you making a motion?
Just, I don't even know if we make a motion, do we? Or do we just ask for that?
Yes, I think at this time, you would need to make a motion since the policy's on for second reading.
Okay. Is there a way to make a motion and do it all at the end? Because I have, I pretty much have a comment on most of them that I didn't get a chance to do.
I don't, I don't, I don't believe so. I think we'll just have to take them one by one.
Sorry.
Mr. Bullier and Ms. Adams, I think if there's going to be significant revision to the policy, then it, it should go back to the committee. I mean, if it's something minor, and I understand that Ms. Walker had a question, Ms. Walker had a question as well. So if there's gonna be, again, significant discussion about a policy and significant change, I would recommend to go back to the committee.
Sure, Madam Chair, I would ask that we remove all of these policies and return them to the policy committee.
All right, is that a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, is there a second? All right, Mr. Wildabour is second. Any discussion? Hey, Ms. Bowie?
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Bullier?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Craybill?
Aye.
Mr. McManus?
Aye.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
And Mr. Wildabour?
Yes.
Ms., I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Ms. Stagner, would I have to move at this time to add an additional policy committee meeting at some point? I mean, I, I can get with, I can get with senior staff to find out what would be best for them, but, or...
I don't think you need a motion on that, Mr. Bullier. You could set the meeting and as long as it's noticed properly, it's a special meeting, that's all you need. And I would also say that you have policies on here for precision and those need to probably wait until the new policies are adopted.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Stagner. All right, moving on, on to new business. The next item on the agenda is a discussion about the board agenda. As you know, this has been a lively dialogue. I know that the policy committee is looking at our board meeting agenda, which is policy 2330. And Mr. Bullier, if you could just speak to some of your thoughts on how it is structured now?
Well, you know, it's, the way it's structured right now, it is a, it's a deterrent to good governance. If there is a member of this board who does not believe that this board needs a consent agenda for MOUs, new business, for things like budget amendments, certainly for policies, I would really like to hear from them. But every governing body in this town, except ours, has a consent agenda. We can't be having meetings till 11 o'clock, you know, going over everything ad nauseam in front of public. Those conversations have to take place before we come up to the dais. So my recommendation, when we put this before the policy committee, will be to add a consent agenda and to speed up these meetings. And it would include new business, MOUs, and policies.
Ms. Stagner, could you speak to what an agenda looks like with other boards of ed? What does a typical agenda look like and how ours is different?
Yeah, it's, it's difficult to sort of make a generalization because every board has its own way of setting up an agenda. I think yours is not all that unusual as far as the structure. Some boards have their closed session at the beginning, some have it at the end of the meeting. Some call to the audience closer to the beginning, some do all the recognitions first and then move into public comment. So those are personal choices or choices that are more individual to the board. I agree with Mr. Bullier that a consent agenda is something that's very common and is, would be helpful, for example, for policies. If the policy is on for first reading, it would go on the consent agenda. And unless there is a desire to pull off something from that consent agenda, it passes with a motion. Same with routine MOUs with, with decisions that, that don't have a lot of controversy. That does not limit the board or board members from requesting that an item be pulled off of the consent agenda and brought forward for a fuller discussion or to be sent back to committee and brought forwarded in a... It just does, as Mr. Bullier said, move things along. And for those items that are not controversial, it's a, it's a good tool. And I would also just point out, it doesn't mean that the public doesn't have the access to those pieces of information or that there's discussion going on behind the scenes. It just means that the board has received that information ahead of time. You've got the supporting documentation and there's no controversy about it.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments from board members? Ms. Walker?
So, so the thing I brought up the last time about putting them all through, obviously, there was discussion that, you know, we had, some of us hadn't quite been here yet and we're still adjusting. We had like 60 policies to read and I had absolutely had read them. So I don't have a problem with consent agenda items, but I would still like the ability to pull some out if there's some that I haven't had the chance to comment on. And I'm sure the public would as well. So I don't have a problem with doing, like I said, there are gonna be policies that are just updated brevity-wise or word-wise or whatever. I don't have an issue, like, out of the 29, there's probably like three I had questions about. So I was just simply, you know, would like to have, still have the opportunity to, to talk about them. That's all, that's all I was saying. So I don't really have a problem, like, MOU stuff. I mean, we're all supposed to be reading the stuff before we get here and I don't have a problem passing that kind of stuff. But I would like the opportunity to speak about it with others.
Mr. Wildabour, and then we'll go to Ms. Justice.
And I'm in agreement. I think the consent agenda makes a lot of sense. I mean, if we're here to, you know, I, I tried my hardest to focus and stay in, but, you know, 11:30 at night, we're, you know... So I think the idea of not getting rid of anything but streamlining it so that we can, you know, stay very focused on what we, you know, the really important things. Also, I'd like to see if the closed session, you know, we do it right off, so, you know, we have people that are here to, to speak or whatever, they have to wait an hour and then come back. So, you know, it might make sense to put that towards the end. We can go and, you know, the folks that are here to, to listen and to hear, you know, don't necessarily need to stay. I've seen that in a lot of other boards too.
I agree.
I think it's important to have it at the beginning, but I think we should move it to like 4:30. I don't know of senior staff.
And that might be an option too.
Because I think it is very important to have that information before we come out here.
Yeah, I agree.
So as the policy committee is gonna be discussing some of those options, great, yeah. Ms. Justice?
Well, I was actually gonna agree with everybody. Every, every group board that I've ever been attendance in or been part of, a consent agenda has been part of it. This is the first time I've actually been on board when they didn't have one, which was quite surprising. So, you know, I think it's a very good idea. That would help an awful lot with streamlining what's going on.
Anyone else? I know how you feel, Mr. McManus, but go for it. Share with us, please.
Was that negative?
Not at all.
I think all the board and everybody that watches and everybody that's seated will agree that we don't get along as well when we leave the hard decisions four and a half or five hours later. Just have to say it.
Okay, thank you. Anything, Ms. Craybill, from you?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
The, yeah, I'm, I'm good.
So thank you, Mr. Bullier, for taking a look at that in policy. And we look forward to, will that be brought forward at the February board meeting?
Yes, I'll ask for a waiver for first reading.
All right, fantastic, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent evaluation instrument. As you know, our main responsibility as a board is to hire our superintendent and to assess performance. And in former years, we have used a in-house assessment tool, performance assessment. What we have attached to our agenda today, there is a state assessment tool. And so what I would ask of board members is, this is not to take a vote today by any means. This is to make you aware of the two different, two different options between now and our February meeting. Take a look and provide feedback. Which one do you feel you're more comfortable with? And we will follow up with this discussion at the February meeting. And Dr. Faust, we would, you know, love to hear some of your feedback on the two instruments as well. All right, any discussion about this item?
Well, I think this makes a lot of sense because it's the same instrument or similar instrument that is used for principals by Dr. Faust, so it makes a lot of sense to me.
Right, and we're, so part of us are very familiar with them, which is a good thing.
All right.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Who evaluates the principals?
The superintendent.
That comes out of Dr. Smith's office. So it's Dr. Smith and the directors.
But you don't do the actual evaluation?
No.
All right, so the next item on our agenda is a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11A3 to consult with the board's attorney to preserve attorney-client privileged information including in the case captioned John Doe versus New Hanover County Board of Education et al., New Hanover County Superior Court Case Number 19-CVS-2745. Is there a motion?
Move for closed session? Mr. Bullier?
Thank you, and second by Mr. Wildabour. And any discussion? All right, Ms. Bowie?
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Bullier?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Craybill?
Aye.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
And Mr. Wildabour?
Aye.
All right, we are in closed session.
Welcome back.
Welcome back.
The next item on the agenda is adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
All right, thank you. Mr. Boyer, seconded by Mr. Wildabour. Are there any discussion? I would just simply like to say for School Board Appreciation Month, we came in to some amazing gifts from some of our schools. Thank you. You are making us feel incredibly appreciated and just thank you for those tokens. And we appreciate you and all your hard work. All right.
Ms. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Boyer.
Aye.
Ms. Justice.
Aye.
Ms. Cravill.
Aye.
Mr. McManus.
Aye.
Ms. Walker.
Yes.
And Mr. Wildabour.
Yes.
All right, motion passed at 7:00. We are adjourned.